This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education and Public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. The Board of Education is meeting electronically due to the local state of emergency as declared by Bering County Board of Commissioners on March 24th, 2021. The public may participate in the meeting by joining the Zoom link listed above. Board members may be contacted through the emails listed below. There is a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. Upon prior request to the superintendent, the district shall make reasonable accommodation for a person with disabilities to be able to participate in the meeting. Requests for special assistance may be sent to liz.gowan@bhas.org. I'll call this meeting to order officially at 5:31 PM. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, and if you all could please unmute and recite it with me, I would appreciate that. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Secretary Triplet, can you please call the roll? Secretary Triplet, if you're speaking, you're still muted. Give us one second, everyone. Okay, I believe Secretary Triplet might be having audio problems. Liz, can you do us the favor of taking roll call?
Certainly. President Robinson?
Present.
Trustee, well, Trustee, Secretary Triplet is on the line, but I, okay, I'll go. Trustee Rocket Martin?
Present.
Treasurer Creighton?
Present.
Secretary Triplet? Vice President Bradley?
Present.
Trustee Buchanan? Trustee Bowen? Vice, Trustee Treasurer, excuse me, Secretary Triplet? President Robinson, I don't know if you want to call that or not, he's on the line, but he's not responding. Technical difficulties, otherwise we do have a quorum.
Okay, I'm on the line with him now, give me one second.
Thank you, everyone, for your patience.
Okay, so he's here, I'm gonna allow him to say present through my phone. Go ahead, Secretary Triplet.
Present.
All right, so we're working on getting him connected, and I believe Trustee Bowens is also on the line.
Trustee Bowen?
Present.
Thank you. Trustee Buchanan? All right, we have a quorum.
Okay, thank you, everyone, for your patience. So our secretary is having a little, a few issues with his audio, but he is present on the line, he's gonna log off and try to log back on. Next, on the agenda, we have approval of the agenda. So I'll allow us to take a look at the agenda as it stands. All right, can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
The motion has been made by Vice President Bradley that we approve the agenda, is there a second or support?
I support.
Okay, so the motion has been made by Vice President Bradley and supported by Trustee Rocket Martin, are there any questions, comments, or concerns regarding the agenda?
Yes, Madam President, I guess it was the personnel, it was a concern on personnel, but I'll wait until we go to that topic.
Okay.
I do have a question slash concern.
Okay. You have the floor, Treasurer Creighton.
Yes, under new hires, I wonder why those staff reports are not individual staff reports? And then I thought that a change would be made that was requested in the email, and I don't see that change.
Okay, so Dr. Townsend, are you trying to unmute? Go ahead.
The only comment I can make is, we talked about the separation of employment being separated. I don't recall us discussing new hires, but we definitely note that as a team, and ensure that we can meet the needs as we move forward.
Yes, yeah, two things, it should be separated, so individuals won't be grouped together, that was a few months ago, but then also, if it's a grant-funded position or a position that does not exist, or that is not open, I don't know how the board can take action on a, on a position that's not open, or has not been created by the board.
Dr. Townsend, do you know which particular position she's referencing?
No, I don't.
Okay, so as it stands today, for the, for the new hires, we're not, we're discussing them in the work session, but we're not actually taking action on them, so I think what Treasurer Creighton is saying, when we go to vote on each of the reports, the HR committee is warning new hire separated, similar to how determinations are, is that correct, Treasurer Creighton?
Yes, ma'am, and then also, there's a position on here that has not been created by the board according to policy, and there was a policy reference given to that committee, and also to you, Madam President, that in order to do a hire, we must create the position according to board policy before we can fill it.
Copy, I'll ensure if that's the case, we'll have a position to the board next week, knowing that we're not taking vote this week.
Thank you both.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Trustee Bowens, I think you stated that your particular discussion item was a question that you're gonna preface during the HR part of the meeting, is that correct?
Yes. Can you explain the differ, well, yeah, I guess I'll, I'll wait, sorry, yeah.
Okay, and then I believe Secretary Triplet, I saw his, saw him, his window open for a moment, so I believe he's back, are there any other questions, comments, or concerns on the agenda? Today is our work session for those that are maybe new to me, and so what we do in our work sessions is we go through the agenda for the regular meeting, and then next week we're gonna take action and vote on certain items. So as it stands, any other questions, comments, or concerns regarding the agenda?
Madam President?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, one other thing, I was looking through, and I noticed that Black Wall Street was taken off of the agenda, I just wondered, is that something that they requested, or do we have other plans on when we're gonna allow them to do their presentation?
So the present, so we inquired previously, I can't believe, I can't remember, I think it was prior to May's meeting, whether or not they wanted an actual presentation at the board meeting, or if the community presentation that they were doing was their standard presentation, so that's why, why that topic is not listed as it relates to an actual presentation on the agenda, and I just did not add it back because I don't believe we have any updates as, as it relates to where we are on taking action on that particular item, so I didn't add it to the agenda for this week. I know I did send you a follow-up email just to kind of check status on things, but I don't, to my understanding, there's no update for us to actually maintain it as an item on the agenda today.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions, comments, or concerns? So the motion was made by Vice President Bradley to approve the agenda and supported by Trustee Rocket Martin. Secretary Triplet, are you active, back active currently?
Would you like me to do the roll call, President Robinson?
Yes, ma'am, if you could help us out with, with those items until he can get his audio working, that would be awesome.
Sure. Trustee Rocket Martin?
Yes.
Trustee Bowen?
Yes.
Treasurer Creighton?
Yes, with the noted modifications.
Yes, ma'am. Secretary Triplet? Vice President, Vice President Bradley?
Yes.
President Robinson?
Yes.
Okay. I'm not sure we passed, do we have a quorum with five? I guess we, one, two, one, two. I don't have, I don't have Treasurer, I don't have Secretary Triplet's vote.
Okay, how many of us are on the line, is it six of us on the line, ma'am?
Right now, you have one, two, three, four, five, and Mr. Triplet, is he on the line now? Yeah, okay. He was present, but he's not able to vote.
Okay, so we have, we have Bowens, we have Bradley, we have Rocket, we have Creighton, we have myself that entered for approval of the agenda, so that's, that's five votes.
That's five votes, so the motion carries for the agenda.
All right, thank you so much. Next, we have public comment on agenda items, and Mr. Triplet is working, Secretary Triplet, my apologies, is working with IT on his audio issues. Next up on the agenda, we have public comment on agenda items. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on district matters. Today, there are three areas for comment on the agenda of which you may decide when to speak, I'm sorry, two areas for comment on the agenda of which you may decide when to speak, public comment on agenda items, and open public comment. Per policy 0167.3, which governs board participation at board meetings, we request that you preface your comments by an announcement of your name, address, and group affiliation when appropriate. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited to a three-minute duration, and per our bylaws, no participant may speak more than once during this meeting. Participants shall direct all comments to the board and not to staff or other participants. The board will listen, take comments and question under advisement, and not respond at this time. I, as President, will refer questions to the superintendent for research and response. If you have specific questions for the board or executive team that require follow-up, please email those directly to liz.gowan@bhas.org. Is there anyone on the line for public comment? And we have a hand raised, so give me one sec. Okay, Ms. Noel, you have the floor.
Good evening, my name is Anicia Noel. I am a active parent of a kindergarten who graduates June 5th, so I have a few questions. My first question would be, what, what was the resolve for my complaint I filed against, against Trustee, Trustee Bowens? What was the resolve for that? What did the district attorney say in the answer to the board about my complaint, since it hasn't been brought up again? As for the 27 million, the chart that you all have put into presentation for this evening, I have the formula that states the opposite of what your chart says, so we're probably gonna discuss that later, but I guess I should say this, I asked a certain high-paid worker for the district, if, if he chose right now to quit his job, would he still do the same thing and volunteer for our kids? That man told me, no, this is his livelihood. I advised him, that's where we differ, because I have a child in the district that he does not have in yet, as you can see, this is almost volunteer work for me, so at this point, I feel like my child is being used as a pawn in a very sick game of conflict of interest. So while we're discussing Bering Risa's recommendations or nominations, while we're discussing strategic planning, in which we have all of the necessary people in the district are ready to do, I just want everybody to keep that in mind, if you don't have children in this district, you cannot continue to use our kids as bonds. Thank you.
All right, thank you, is there anyone else on the line for public comment on agenda items? All right, I don't see any hands, and hearing none, we'll proceed with the agenda. Next on the agenda, we have review of meeting minutes. The minutes are from the work session for 5:421 and the regular session for 5:1121. We won't be taking action on voting on these tonight, but are there any questions, comments, or concerns currently regarding work session 5:421 and regular session 5:1121 minutes? All right, if you have any questions, wants reviewed further, feel free to send those over to Liz, we're gonna move it right along to board business. We start our board business review of our board norms. The Board of Education norms for Benton Harbor area schools, we will treat each other with respect, we will listen to learn, we will refrain from side conversations, we will use our time wisely, starting and ending our meetings on time, we will challenge ideas, not people, we will ask questions when in doubt, there will be no surprises at the board table, we will practice the seven norms of collaboration, and those norms are pausing, paraphrasing, posing questions, putting ideas on the table, providing data, paying attention to self and others, and presuming positive intentions. Next up, we have our committee reports. Secretary Triplet, are you back on the line? I don't know if his audio is working.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you, go right ahead, sir.
Oh, Lord. Can you go to someone else, I'm just trying to get my, my.
I sure can, I can come back to you, I can put you right at the bottom.
All right, thank you.
Okay, and Secretary Triplet?
Yes.
We, the only thing that we couldn't get you for was approval of the agenda.
Okay, approved, right?
It was approved.
Okay, so put me down, yes.
Okay. All right, so we're gonna be, being as Secretary Triplet, need some time to get adjusted from dealing with his technical issues, we are going to start today with facilities. Vice President Bradley?
Yes, if you were, Trustee Bowens could take, do the minutes for me, I'm driving at the moment.
Okay, Trustee Bowens, would you mind?
Oh, let me call him up, sorry.
It's okay.
Appreciate that, thank you.
The facilities committee, we had several, oh, it's, hold on, I gotta get out of this room, we've had several discussions, and we discussed about the teen center, being the gate up, because that is being blighted with people dumping and making sure that's not going to be done anymore, sorry, I'm ab-living because my computer's taking slow. We had a lengthy and very, but very productive meeting addressing the needs of our facilities. We discussed the athletic, athletic department, when phase two of the construction of the press box would occur, that's estimated of $25,000, the baseball field safety issue, it's an infield of a four-inch difference with grass, looking, we're looking to install moon dust to help minimize injury to our student athlete, athletes. There was a discussion on a possible donation to upgrade the PA system for the gymnasium. We also have been ongoing issues with our teen center facilities, and those include security cameras, and issues getting them connected to maintain the monitoring system, building access, fixing up the tennis court, and installing a gate, moved from the Empire Parking Lot to keep trespassers and illegal dumping out. We also discussed possible options with the pool facilities, from filling it in to finding a possible community partnerships, I understand that one. We discussed the replacement of our bus garage signage, that is named after one of our, probably, I think, only two of our school buildings, are named after prominent figures, and one is the MLK Building, and the other is the Renee Robinson Transportation Building, and that sign needs to be replaced, so we're looking on that. We are waiting on white men and associates to assess the high school boiler replacement and upgrade, we are currently waiting on a replacement cost, we're expecting around $6 million, and the timeframe from one to two years, that's gonna go with our capital and strategic plan. Andy Egan, he performed or was scheduled to do maintenance on the high school system, HVAC system, it was shut down, and we think it was due to the delay of, we recently had a cold snap, I don't know about you, but we had to turn the heat on, air on, one day, heat on, again. We discussed the installation of knock boxes that will allow one of our first responders access to the buildings after hours, and only the public safety agencies would have access to these codes, it would be installed by the public safety departments, Benton Harbor area schools would have to pay for it. We also discussed, I'm sorry if I'm going too fast, by the way, Benton Harbor High School parking lot repair, restripping and internal purchasing of a stripping machine, we're looking to add another handicap spot in the central administration parking lot, and we discussed possible tree removal and doing a landscaping renovation of the high school courtyard. The lawn care was brought up also at the meeting, there was an issue with one of the companies mowing over trash and letting paper be thrown about, we also brought up who was responsible for keeping the building lines up during the day, and that is on the building custodian. I will also say this was an added, if you look at the facilities at the high school, the alumni association has been doing a wonderful job, and the upkeep, and I drove past it just a few minutes ago, and it looked wonderful, and I actually got out there and helped them the other day, and I think Thursday, they'll be putting some mulch down, the alumni bought some mulch, so they're doing a lot of improvements as far as the outside of the school building and our grounds, so that's it from the facilities committee, if I missed anything, I apologize.
Thank you, Trustee Bowens, for stepping in and helping out Vice President Bradley, I would have done so, but I speak majority of the meeting, so I appreciate you for stepping up in that manner. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns from the board regarding the update provided for facilities? Awesome, we're gonna move on to finance.
Actually, I'm sorry, President Robinson, I have a question. Yes. Um, I noticed that during the finance committee, that the demolition projects came up, and so I wondered if that was something that the facilities committee had talked about, because he didn't mention that, but, you know, like, plans for that or next steps?
Madam President?
Go ahead, Trustee Bowens.
Trust, I mean Treasurer Creighton, we did mention about demolition, like, I believe, President, Vice President Robinson may have brought that up a couple of meetings ago, it was not at this past meeting, but it has been discussed at our previous committee meetings.
All right, Treasurer Creighton, you have the floor, whenever you're ready for your reports.
Okay. I wanted to read something, and then go into my reports, it's directly related, but, so it's on our website, it says, our school board, the citizens elected to serve as trustees of the Benton Harbor area schools are responsible for the formulation and adoption of educational policies. These policies are consistent with the laws governing public education set by the state constitution. Rules and guidelines for action by the board are also set by the Michigan Board of Education, whose members are elected by voters of the state of Michigan. Local policies are set only after careful consideration is given to the goals of education for the Benton Harbor area schools. Board policy serves as guideposts and basis for action by the superintendent of schools and his or her staff, and then there are some goals under that, and I only read that because I think it's important for the public, and for the public to know, but then also for us as board members to know and understand, you know, what our work is, so that moving forward, you know, people will know, and it won't be so much confusion as to what it is that the seven of us are responsible for, so as it pertains to the, so I guess, in brief, you know, we do not have a CEO, we have seven elected officials. Pertains to the finance committee, we talked about, we did adjust our time, but everyone was present from that committee, and we talked about the annual budget hearing, the district's annual hearing will be June 22nd for this year, for the 2021, but. Service contract extension, we talked about the full service contract, which is currently sedex goal, and possibly bringing a resolution before the board to extend their contract for one year, and our finance chief talked a lot about demolition rates and some possible things for us to do moving forward with those school millage rates, and we talked about, like I just mentioned, the demolition projects of the three buildings, and what that would cost, I guess, for me personally, I was still kind of wondering about that, and, you know, the amount of money, $500,000, that we're looking to put into such a project, so that was pretty much our meeting, what questions might be left there?
All right, are there any questions for Treasurer Creighton regarding the finance committee meeting or committee report? All right, hearing none, you can proceed with your HR committee report.
Okay, so for the HR committee, I'm gonna go briefly through that, and then yield my time to the HR director for her presentation, and I read that policy on our board website, because, you know, and I'm trying to say this in the most professional way possible, but we keep saying that we're not gonna have surprises at the board table, but yet, from my committee report, or my committee's agenda Wednesday, several things has changed, as noted on the agenda, so I can't honestly speak to the agenda, I can only speak to our meeting, so I'm gonna do that. So during our meeting, we talked about the teacher and training program, Dr. Sheldon, our chief of teaching and learning, she did a presentation to the, the human resource committee to talk about, give us a program overview of what teachers and trainings are, and then also the teacher and resident, so she talked a lot about that program, she shared opportunities for individuals who might not have the degree, have a degree in education, or might not be a certified teacher, all of the opportunities up to a master's degree, being in that program, so that was very exciting to hear and learn more about the teacher and training program, so I guess for individuals listening who are interested in being teachers, or working in Benton Harbor area schools. or um working in Benton Harbor area schools, um please look on our website for opportunities um for that. Also, um, she talked about some staffing, um separations of employment and new hires. Um, and we, we spent some time talking about um the policy um in which when there is a new position um that the superintendent and his cabinet would like to create. We talked about the board policy related to that. Um, and we made the recommendation that they would bring um a list of 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 positions um directly related to the literacy grant that they're anticipating um feeling so that we can get those approved, discuss them and move forward. Um, as this is a a very um trying time for us to give positions feel right at the end of the school year. So we talked about that. So that's something to look forward to. And then um it was some new hires mentioned. And uh we talked about the recruitment for a high school principal and head football coach. And then um we spent some time talking about the Ben Harvard Harbor um area schools, demographic, amount of teachers, you know, the years of seniority, um, the amount of subs, the teachers in training. And so we spent some time just kind of digging into that information and trying to learn what the staff makeup is as it pertains to teaching and learning. Um, we did run out of time. Um, but we also spent a little time talking about um the teacher pay gap and how our human resource staff and the superintendent is working to try to get um money back to teachers um who are the backbone of our district and so how we can, you know, make um make up for lost time over the years of the pay cut that was taken and how we can get them, you know, back to where they need to be so that it's not such a financial strain um to be a teacher. And so um I think that was pretty much the gist of what we talked about.
Thank you, treasurer Creighton. Are there any questions for her regarding the human resources committee report?
I just want, can you hear me?
Yes, sir. You have the floor, secretary Triplett.
Yeah, I just wanna piggyback on um what um trustee, treasurer Creighton was saying. Some of the things that were discussed in the meeting, we, you know, it, the no surprises at the board table goes always. And so it just amazes me as a member of the human resource committee that every time we come out of this meeting and then when it's time to go into this work session, there are just things everywhere that never came up in that particular meeting. So that's some, that's something that we definitely need to, to work on. Because again, and I'm gonna continue to use this term, I, 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 I'm not feeling comfortable um in many areas. And I will definitely um express that um and I will start expressing my concerns in writing. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns regarding the H R committee report? All right, secretary Triplett, are you ready for curriculum?
I guess so. Okay, can you see me?
I can see you.
Okay, all right, wanna make sure what y'all seeing is what I want y'all to see. With uh my computer, it came, it said something about the administrator of this particular system has blocked me out of some um things. So I'm just gonna try to do my best tonight. As you all can see on the regular agenda, um, the curriculum and special education subcommittee meeting was loaded. Um, it was kind of difficult to get everything in. In that hour span. But we did hear from um fourth grade teacher Brenda Terrell and about how um they were excited about them being a part of the um summer school plans and um taking some lead on the prep for summer school. Um, Mr. Rocket, M. Shannon Rocket, um who is also the C T E director um presented uh some information as it relates to uh cosmetology. And then there was uh a doctor Ryan Global presented um principal special project uh report. Um, we talked about the textbook, adoption guide, um study team guide. And you all will hear a lot of this tonight so that you'll be able to um have some input. But um for the most part, the agenda was very extensive. And so um you'll hear more about it tonight. Thank you.
Okay, are you all set, secretary Triplett?
Am I, am I what?
Are you all set with your report?
Yeah, I'm, I just gave it. I'm done.
Okay, are there any questions, comments, or concerns regarding uh curriculum for secretary Triplett? All right. So before we move on, I do wanna kind of add to something. Sometimes there are and I know we're gonna talk more about committees in our work session um later this week. And I'm trying to see if we can get a training squeezed in on committee. So if we can, that'll be an update on the agenda. But I know that sometimes there are updates that occur within the district that may occur within, like after our committee meetings. And so the best way for those committee updates to come to us is at the is at the board table at times. So what we'll have to do is try to figure out how we can create a system so that we don't feel as though there's, there's uh surprises at the board table, but they can still bring that order of business to us at the board meeting and not have to wait an additional month.
Can I add to that?
Go ahead.
Um, I do wanna say, um, with regards to what's on the agenda versus what's on the committee report agenda is, for example, if we have a committee meeting on Wednesday and the following Tuesday, there's a work session. Within that timeframe, you can have a resignation, you can have a hire take place. So it's possible that information will not be on the previous agenda if it occurred after the agenda. So for example, if someone resigned in a prominent position and we bring that to the work session, it is possible that would not have been on the work session or excuse me, on the committee meeting because it occurred after the fact. And um I do believe that it's the work session, the benefit of it is that there is no surprise at the regular board meeting because you see it for the first time a week in advance. Uh, we'll continue on our side of the equation as an administrative team to be as communicative as possible, even if that means using the email just to say, just an F Y I, this will come up on the agenda. Uh, because as the superintendent, I don't like that um our board members feel that there's surprises. There's no intent to be surprises, but things do occur after a committee meeting because once that meeting is long gone, you know, we still are grinding and working and things come and go, things happen. So there's no intent to bring surprises. But that, I just wanted to share that to piggyback off what you said, president Robinson. Thank you.
And we're, we're gonna get it, we're gonna get all of this worked out and fine tuned perfectly. Um, we're getting better. Each, each month, we're getting better. And I think it was treasurer Creighton that I was talking to when I told her that I want our team to be as good as the ninety five Bulls. So we have some work and some practice and some meetings and some work retreats to, to go to get there, but I'm definitely um committed to to putting my work in to ensure that we can get there.
Madam President?
Yes, secretary Triplett, go ahead.
Anything that comes up um after, you know, the major things and it's been, it's really been um very common, if you will, um in the H R committee. And so for me, if something comes up, each committee has a chairman. And so I don't know why, or maybe I'm wrong. Why if something new has come up, because we're at this place every time we come to this meeting, to this work session, we're in the same place. And we've been in this place for some time, that if something came up, someone should contact that H R chairman. And that H R chairman can get that information to the H R committee. So again, I mean, this was, you know, we're moving so fast and we're coming in and now we've been to hire four people that we knew nothing about um less than three days ago or four days ago. You know, um, uh, or, or two working days, all of this stuff came and it happened that quick. You know, so a, a call to the H R chairman um and email, but that communication piece is a must. It, it, it's not a non-negotiable. And for me, like I said, when I come and I look at an agenda and I see things on here, when we were in a meeting, that we stayed in that meeting almost an hour and a half later. Um, it, it just, it's like I said, it's, 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 it's very concerning. I said what I said and I meant exactly what I said. And I am looking forward to us getting this together because this is not comfortable for me. Thank you.
I mean, you're welcome. And I think Dr. Towns will talked about trying to get that process figured out as far as email updates and things like that. So we will make sure we get all of that ironed out. Um, next on the agenda is the Bering Risa School Board elections.
President Robinson, I have a question about.
About the election?
Oh, oh, I didn't know you were gonna go. Okay, I'm sorry, I'll let you go over it and then I'll ask my question at the end. I still haven't. Sorry about that.
No, no worries. So I'm, so one thing that you all will notice that I'm not gonna do, normally when we first started, I would open every resume, every wrench intro and read them. We've had this information for, I think, a couple of weeks. Um, and then it's also on the agenda if you all wanna go back. So I'm gonna read this first statement so everyone's clear on what we're doing. And then I'm not gonna read through all of the resumes or intros. So Bering Risa has two board seats available for election. Um, the election is scheduled to be held Monday, June seventh at five thirty. It's being held to fill two seats, both for six-year terms expiring June thirtieth, twenty twenty seven. The seats are currently held by board vice president Dave Pagel and trustee Kathy Bear. Ms. Bear is not seeking reelection. Five individuals have filed for this position, Dave Pagel, Sarah Bates, Kevin Ivors, Andrew Robinson, and Daniel Seedling. I apologize if I mispronounced any names. Bering Risa's Board of Education members are elected by Bering County School District's Board of Education members prior to the official election. Each local district will adopt a resolution indicating whom they attend to vote for as well as nominate a de- a designate for their board to officially submit their district's ballot at the Bering Risa Administrative Cent- Center on Monday, June seventh. So previously, in our um organizational meeting, we did make secretary Triplett that um representative and trustee Rocket Martin, I believe, is the alternative. However, they do require that we vote on who is actually going to be present to place that vote. And then we also um have to decide who we as a board want to vote on. Um, so the resolution that we'll be taking action on in our work retreat is whereas the bi- biennial election of the Board of Bering Regional Education Service Agency will be held Monday, June seventh at a meeting of representatives from constituent school boards. Whereas section three eight zero six one four two of the revised school code requires a constituent school board to designate its representative and identify the immediate school board candidate. The board supports for each position to be filled on the board by a resolution adopted not early than twenty one days prior to the date of the election. And whereas section three eight zero point six one four two prescribes the method of passage method for passage of a resolution, including the requirement of considering the resolution at not less than one public meeting before adopting the resolution. And whereas the board previously considered the res- resolution and an open meeting conducted in a manner prescribed under the Openset Meetings Act on June fifth, twenty twenty one. And so here is, here it be resolved that we would determine who our um representative will be, who the alternate will be, and then which of the candidates we're going to select. And then those particular member, the people that we determine will go to the Bering Risa Board of Election will put in the votes on behalf of Benton Harbor area schools based on the person that we decide or elect to choose Saturday. And so there was multiple candidates and treasurer Creighton, I'll let you start with your question, just in case I didn't um answer.
I'm sorry, I was just gonna ask um if we were doing that um publicly or was it being done by a ballot? Um, that was it, but you pretty much did answer that it was gonna be done through a resolution on Saturday.
Yes, thank you. You're welcome. Go ahead, secretary Triplett.
Well, I know, I know that you were the secretary of the Board of Education um prior to be uh being elected as the president of the Board of Education, but I am the secretary of the Board of Education and I do have a note that's sent from Bering Risa to all secretaries of the Boards of Education in Bering County. Um, I have also been in communication with um Alene Smith, who's the secretary of the Bering Regional Educational Service Agency Board of Education. I have uh made reservations as the representative from Benton Harbor area schools to be in attendance on Monday, June the seventh, two thousand twenty at five thirty P M as the representative of Benton Harbor Area Schools Board of Education.
Okay, so I would have no reason why we wouldn't select you because we've already made you that position. So we just have to formally do, but I'm, I'm very highly impressed.
Thank you so very, very much. And again, I have been in communication with them. And they have been in communication with me, um, and they have sent letters and what have you. So I do have a file and I will be following up with you to let you know what information they've given me as well. As the secretary of the Benton Harbor Area School Board of Education. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So we have to officially select our de- our uh delegate and our al- alternate in the event that something is uh wrong with secretary Triplett on Monday to go and make that vote on behalf of the district. The choices are Dave Pagel, Sarah Bates, Kevin Ivors, Andrew Robinson, and Daniel Seedling. Did anyone have an opportunity to review um the documentation for each of those individuals? Does anyone have any thoughts or insights on trustees that looked good to them? Uh, potential trustees, rather.
Madam President, sorry.
You have the floor, trustee Bowens.
I did look at some of them. Um, one was recently a superintendent for Bering Risa. One is alumni of Benton Harbor area schools and one is also a school board president. Um, if I had to choose between the two, um Sarah Bates and Andrew Robinson, um, they were pretty impressive to me on my end.
Okay, and if I'm not mistaken, is Mr. Robinson the alum from Benton Harbor area schools?
Let me go check his resume. Yes, yes.
All right. So trustee Bowens was stating that Mr. Robinson and Ms. Bates looked good to him. Anyone else? Um, take a look and have any feedback on potential trustees for Bering Risa?
Um, madam president.
You have the floor, secretary Triplett.
I did receive um a letter from um the former superintendent of of Bering Risa, Dr. Ivors. Um, and he sent information out um saying why he would like to be on uh that particular Board of Education. Um, and also, um, as um trustee Bowen said, I had the opportunity to be uh a teacher at Martinville Elementary School where Andrew Robinson attended. Um, and he is over mosaic. Um, at this particular time, I think that's one of his roles as um the director of that particular program. There is also, um, and I don't have my paperwork right here in front of me, a parent um, um, who has been working down through the years in Benton Harbor area schools. Um, I, I think his kids are grown now, but he is one of the candidates also. And um I said, I don't have my stuff here. I'm just rattled from trying to get in for about a half an hour. But I do um would like to, when we go into that session, I will have some more information. Um, for people who have, um, I think one of the most important things is that we need to identify people that is at that particular level that is going to definitely be looking out for the best interest of Benton Harbor area schools. Um, that seems, there seems to be a, a disconnect of, there seems to be a, if you will, a lack of trust um historically. Um, and this is not new. This has been something for a long time. So I think that we really need This has been something for a long time, so I think that we really need not take this lightly. When we're getting ready to make our decision as to who we would like to represent us um, in those two vacancies. So there are some ways that we all can do our homework and be able to present it at the retreat, at the table. And um, be able to present why we would support these individuals. It's not, this is not something that we should take lightly because the regional center is an integral part. Uh, you know, they represent us in different areas and at different levels. And so that's very, very important that we do have people who are pro Benton Harbor and that will stand up and speak on behalf of Ben Harbor Area Schools. Thank you.
President Robinson?
You have the floor, Treasurer Creighton.
And just to piggyback off of what my um, fellow trustee said, um, I, I did look over some things. And I also noticed that there is an article that's circulating. Um, that states that one of the candidates have been recently appointed by. The um, C E O of Conexus with the New Charter High School as a board member. Um, recently, I think in May, so that might be something that we, you know, make sure that we're looking at. Like um, Secretary Triplet said, to make sure that when we select a candidate to represent. Um, to, to be a representative on that board, that is someone. That is going to look out for the best interest of Benton Harbor Area Schools, students and family. And programming, and so um, I think it's important to be able to look at the conflicts of interest. And to think about people that will best align with what it is that Benton Harbor Area Schools um, is trying to do and what's best for us.
Thank you, Treasurer Creighton. Any other input from the board? And I initially had this set as something to vote on today because we had to have it by the seventh. But I'm glad that we scheduled our board retreat because we have an opportunity to have discussion and then actually vote on Saturday. And Trustee Rocket Martin, were you getting ready to speak?
Yes, and I appreciate you for doing that. Uh, I do know Sarah Bates personally, I've worked with Sarah uh, for a few years. Um, she was from originally servicing the Niles area. But I've worked with her through the I S D on many projects in math and science and, and other things. And in fact, she was my um, for, for the state of Michigan, the person that evaluated our Title One plan. Uh, for my building, so I do know her personally. Um, Andrew, I believe if that's the one that was from Benton Harbor, I believe I worked with him as a student. So um, you know, i- if that's the same Andrew Robinson. But those two I am kind of familiar with, uh, but I'm glad you said we would have further uh, time to think about, discuss this. At our board retreat.
Thank you, Trustee Rocket Martin. Yes, ma'am, so this is actually on the agenda for Saturday for vote. So um, if you all need a little extra time to look over the documents, the resumes that were provided, feel free to do so. And then we will revisit this and be officially selecting our representative and alternate representative. As well as the two candidates that we'll be voting for on Saturday.
President Robinson.
Yes, Secretary Triplet.
Yes, and also there are some citizens that are, that are here on the meeting it um, as well that um, keep up with those types of things. I don't want to get stuck with the fact just because they're from Benton Harbor, we need to do that research. Um, and I thank uh, President, um, I mean Treasurer. Uh, Creighton for even bringing up that if, 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 if someone is running. For this particular position and they are on the Board of Education for Conexus. I don't care if they're from Jerusalem, I don't care if they lived on Broadway, I don't care if they uh, uh, have partnership in Meeks. I think that that is something that we need to be up on top of and make sure that we have the right people that's going to represent and that's who we vote for. Thank you.
Thank you, Secretary Triplet. And um, prior to us, the next item on the agenda is. Superintendents uh, reports, but Dr. Towns, I wasn't sure, are you familiar with either of these candidates or do you have any input to add from work you've done?
Um, all I know is that um, uh, Dr. Ivors, I did met, meet him prior to his retirement. Um, as the former Superintendent of Bering Reissa. Um, and I have worked with Andrew Robinson, um, their mosaic company also was our lawn care provider last year. Um, so I do know those individuals.
Okay, thank you. So I'm gonna pass it on to you, Dr. Towns, for um, your report on strategic planning. And thank you to the board for your discussion regarding the Bering Reissa School Board Elections and for conducting board business so eloquently.
Sure, so um, I, I hope to bring this next week to our board, regular board meeting. Um, the subject is strategic plan. Um, the reason for board approval is that the district needs to pursue a long-term vision. By achieving academic and financial stability for the district. And a sustainable and stable platform for growth that will ensure the district's integrity in a manner that enables it to grow, prosper, and thrive. The assistance of our time firm is integral to its ability to pursue the process and set goals in a comprehensive and unbiased manner. The facts and analysis, three separate firms have presented their prospective programs to the board in the months of April and May. The request is that the board choose a firm to assist in a process of creating and implementing um, a strategic plan. There is no policy reference and the recommended action is that the Benton Harbor Area School Board of Education. Vote to approve a firm to assist in the creation of a strategic plan. That would outline the process of long-term goal-setting, recovery, and growth. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Towns. So the three um, options that we had presentations from were communications by design. Hazard Young, Atiya and Associates, and M A S B. And so I just wanted to allow a, a little bit of conversation or open the floor from the board. As to whether anyone had a preferred company of the three or if there was feedback on looking at those three and trying to. Get it down to a particular choice. So I'll open the floor up if anyone has any questions, comments, or concerns regarding staff report S one. Uh, Vice President Bradley, you have the floor.
Um, I just wanted to say I looked over um, all three proposals. And um, I really was impressed um, with uh, M A S B and um. I actually was impressed with all of them, I guess it would just come down to how um, we could just, you know, once we decide which direction we want to go. But how we implement the plan and um, you know, of course, the cost of that too. So um, I did have a chance to look over it, I think the um. I looked at one plan, it was very detailed, and that was from the Hazelwood District House, House here by St. Louis. And um, that was a good plan, and then I know I looked at M A S B and that was kind of an up-to-date plan that was very detailed. And um, so I'd like to say all, all three of the sample plans I viewed were very detailed. And so I, I look forward to whichever direction we go of getting something established.
Thank you for your insight, Vice President Bradley. Any other input from the board?
Yes, Madam President.
You have the floor, Secretary Triplet.
You know, for me, when I look at, at strategic planning. And um, and look at the staff that we have in place, I kind of struggle with the fact that we. Are getting ready to outsource, once again, something that I feel. Um, that our central administration should be able to lead and navigate through. Um. This is something that is a part of the pedagogy. Um, for those in educational leadership. Um, you know, when I look at, I, I, I've been waiting for a vision and a mission and. This work is, and I've had an opportunity myself to go through and just look at strategic plans. All across the state. Um, and um, across the country. And so the work, but if this is something that our administration feels that they need. To uh, have in order for them to be able to complete this work. Um, I think for, for me, um, M A S B stands out of. The most for me. Um, their work, we've already, we, we're already aligned um, in so many different areas. In particular as a Board of Education um, with their work. Um, and they have um, done through trial and error, a lot of work with districts. Um, across the state that look like ours, they're working with them now. And I think that that would be, um, I think all of us, all of our entities, the Board of Education, I'm not sure. If the Superintendent um, has, um, I'm almost positive that some of the work that he has done is through M A S B. Um, so we, we almost, we have a relationship, they have some um, history with the district. And so I do feel uh, comfortable with M A S B. And the way in which they will do the work because what they're going to do from what I've seen, the way in which they go forth and their instruction and what have you. I think they'll be able to hit it all the way down and I think that they will um, strengthen our um, central administration. And be um, a, a great assistant to uh, the Superintendent as we plan to go forward. But I had to say that, um, because that's the way I feel. Um, but right now, that's neither here nor there, we need a strategic plan as soon as possible. And uh, we need to get it done. So thank you for that opportunity.
Thank you, Secretary Triplet. Any other input regarding the strategic planning options?
I too like M A S B. Um, and I want to say this, I know that um, we'll be doing the work uh, for sure. And we're just kind of looking to M A S A B to le- give us some guidance and, and leadership. Uh, in a sense of guidance, but not really just doing our plan for us. And also to help us steer clear of some pitfalls that we might uh, you know, run into or some barriers that we might have. So like Mr. Triplet said, they have a history with our district and they work with other districts similar to ours. So I too am, am leaning toward M A S B.
All right, thank you. So um, we will have this on the agenda for next week. Um, in actually selecting an option. His staff report does not recommend a particular choice, it just asks that we select one. I know that we've received quite a few. Um, PowerPoints and clarifications and proposals and things from each of the presenters. I'm torn, I agree with everyone else as it relates to M A S B, we work with them very closely. But I also like communications by design as well, so I'm still um, marinating over both of those particular options. But I um, agree with everyone's input on M A S B. And Dr. Towns, if you didn't provide a suggestion, did you have anyone that you? Um, per- had a preference for, or were they all three that you liked?
Well, thank you for that, uh, giving me a chance for input. You know, honestly, I can work with either three. Um, I just want to work with who the board selects, um, so that we're all in alignment. Um, I do agree with being vertically and horizontally aligned with M A S B. I do like that, that's how I think, that's the way I am. I do have experience working with communications by design. As an assistant superintendent, so I do understand they do good work. Um, and Hazard Young and Atiya, Hazard Young, Atiya and Associates, um, they work across the country. I do know they do phenomenal work. I know superintendents in districts who've used them, um, and they, they put out a phenomenal product as well. But I would reserve my opinion uh, to whatever the board decides, I'm a role with, we're gonna execute it and we'll be fine.
Okay, thank you for providing your input. Um, so next week when we come back for our regular meeting. We will actually be taking vote on an option. So those that feel strongly about a particular option after we do more research. I'll be asking for a motion for a particular company and we'll be taking vote on that particular company. Um, when we get to staff report S one, so kind of marinate on it, the information, the proposals that will, we've received. So we can be prepared to do that um, next.
Um, Madam President, I just wanted to say something real quick too. Yeah, I was just wanting to say that um, also, you know, to, you know, to the people in the public um, who are listening, we just want to let you know that. Uh, yeah, we are looking for things that are culturally competent, but we'll also have a lot of community input with this. And so just be mindful that, you know, of that, when we, you know, ask people to do surveys and when they come out to form groups. Make sure that you are thinking in your minds who you would like to be a part of the strategic plan. Just don't think uh, in the circle, think about a broad spectrum of people in the community. That will help us uh, chart a path for the next, you know, five, um, for the next five years.
Thank you for that additional um, insight, Vice President Bradley. And thank you, Dr. Towns, for for providing staff report S one. We are gonna move right on to business and finding. Mr. Johnson.
Thank you. The first staff report is annual budget hearing scheduling before we, I begin my staff report. So I will ask Ms. Goodwin if she could refresh the agenda page to display some asterisks that highlight some updated staff reports, I'll explain those in just a moment. Uh, we'll start with the staff report. Reason for board consideration each year, a public budget hearing is scheduled for the ensuing fiscal year's initial budget. Facts analysis, it's recommended that the combined budget hearing and truth and taxation hearing for the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year. Be held on June twenty-two at five thirty P M. Board bylaw six, one sixty-four point two states that special meetings of the board may be called by the president. Or by any two members of the board, provided there's compliance with the notice provisions of these bylaws. And there's no recommended action other than the board president uh, formally designating that date. And I would note that in the board agenda, I've added an asterisk after that topic, annual budget hearing. Scheduling, so you can see that uh, over on the staff report, F one. That asterisk on the right designates that there was a change to the staff report and likewise with staff two. To make it easy to see that there was an update since the staff report was initially loaded last week. Are there any questions regarding this item?
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. J? I'll ask a question for you that others may have. Can you just give us a brief synopsis of what a budget hearing is so that they are aware of what they would be coming June twenty-second at five thirty to do?
Yes, I'll be glad to. A budget hearing is an overview of the district's budget, including the general fund, food service fund, and the sinking funds. And includes projected revenues and expenditure costs, expenditures for the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year. And it will be a PowerPoint presentation, probably twenty to twenty-five-ish slides. And at the end of the hearing, the board will receive a recommendation to approve the fiscal year-end budget revision. For the fiscal year that's just ending in late June. And recommended action to approve the fiscal year twenty-two budget, the initial budget for that fiscal year. And the budget hearing will also include a very, very brief truth and taxation hearing of like one or two slides.
Thank you, sir.
Madam President.
You have the floor, Secretary Triplet.
So when we're talking about the budget, uh, this budget hearing, I have not heard of very much being said. Since I've been on the Board of Education as it relates to the audit that we received. I haven't heard anybody talk about it. And I've been studying this audit for some time, I pick it up and put it back down. And there are some critical pieces in that audit. That when we're making that decision, I don't know why we haven't had um, any discussions on the audit from a financial perspective. Because that audit is what we should be really focusing in on and making sure that we are in alignment. With the audit as Board of Education members. Um, and up on top of it, there was a segment in there where they were talking about. In the audit, um, um, our hiring practices. And no system in place in alignment with the finance department. So people are just being hired, salaries are just being offered. And um, we're not even, we're not up on that. So I would like to say to the Board of Education. Um, prior to us going into this budget hearing, that we really um, look at that audit. Because those are key things. Because those are key things that we will have to report out to the state that we are monitoring as a Board of Education, and we're making sure that these things are done properly or that they're being followed, or that when we get these reports as it relates to finance and what have you, that the audit itself has been taken into consideration. Because I do have some questions. I really have not figured it out yet. How to talk to people, who to talk to people, when I can particularly talk to people, how to get these questions out and answered. But yes, I would like to encourage the board to really go through that audit and make sure that when we get this, when this, when this public hearing is presented to the public, that those items have been taken into consideration, both the good things that we did and even the things that we need to do better. Thank you.
Thank you, Secretary Tripoli. Any other questions, comments, or concerns regarding the annual budget hearing staff report F one? Mr. Johnson, did you have anything that you wanted to respond to, to what Secretary Tripoli said? If not, we can proceed to staff report F two.
Yes, I will briefly. Thank you. I believe that Secretary Tripoli may have read that in the management discussion analysis section of the most recent audit report. And as I recall, the language in that M D N A, it's called, does include information regarding how the hiring practices, specifically communication between the Human Resources Department and the Business Office have improved significantly to improve and make it easier to budget more accurately than the district was able to before. So that has been an improvement. And if there are any other questions regarding the audit, Mr. Tripoli is certainly welcome to address those to Dr. Townsend and be happy to assist with those. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. We can move forward to staff report F two.
Thank you. The next item is millage rates for twenty twenty one. Each year, the Board of Education approves the millage rates for school property taxes. Facts analysis this evening, it's recommended that the district levy the same millage rates in twenty twenty one as those that were levied back last year. And this staff report has been updated. You'll see the blue language has been added, the blue paragraph. The twenty 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 one tax rate request form, also called L forty twenty nine, that's attached to the work session agenda was in draft form last week, and it's been updated today to include millage rates that would be levied as proposed, which would be one hundred percent, and the millage rates to be levied in December to be done. So one hundred percent summer tax levy. There's no policy reference, and it's recommended that these rates be approved as listed below one week from this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any questions, comments, or concerns regarding staff report F two?
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
When we talk about the, the homestead and, and, and those various pieces in, 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 in the, in the budget, in the staff report, I think that it's important that, you know, as board members, when we're talking about school finance and what have you, that people know that when you vote for the homestead or you vote for this particular thing, it's not going to adjust your property taxes or, you know, things like that. I think that that's important. I know that this just comes to you, just, it just comes to you. But I think it would be very helpful to me, I can't speak on behalf of anybody else, but just as, if, if you can put it in as much layman terms as possible, where we're saying, okay, if we vote for this, that's not going to increase your taxes. If we vote for, if we, if we approve this, you know, that, that's going to, that might take it up. You know what I mean? Just put it where so people can see exactly what it is that we're doing. Because I know in school finance that there were some things that a lot of times people, oh, they're trying to raise our taxes, and we, they don't, it, it doesn't affect them at all. But I think that that's very, very important that the citizens know. You know, because everybody was privy to be in the class to find out how that actually works. So if there's any way possible when we're doing this, that we can, even if it's something that you, you, you could send to us or, you know, get that information also, then when we're talking to our constituents, we're saying, hey, when we support this right here, it's not going to cost you anything. But, you know, this is just something that we need you to do to support, to sustain our school district.
Good, good, good suggestion. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions regarding staff report F two? If not, we'll proceed to F three. You have the floor, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you. This is the monthly financial reports. Reason for board consideration. Each month, a set of financial reports is provided to the Board, Board of Education. And facts analysis this evening, it's recommended that payments, actually next week, it'll be recommended that payments for all the district's funds be approved for the month of April. Policy reference is sixty four seventy, payment of claims, and recommended motion is presented below.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any questions, comments, or concerns regarding staff report F three? And if you all have, I don't know if you all noticed, I'm trying, I'm working through this meeting, trying to get us through as far as our timing is concerned. But if you do find that you have additional follow-up questions, we don't take vote on anything until next week. So feel free to shoot those questions over via email. Mr. Johnson, you can proceed to staff report F four.
Thank you. This is snowplow service contract extension. Reason for board consideration, the district has an opportunity to lock in snow removal services for the next school year at a cost that's lower than what was bid last year. Facts analysis, last year, the district requested bids for snowplow services. And the request for proposals stated that the board could extend the contract for up to two additional years. The vendor that provided snowplow service last year has offered to provide a five percent cost reduction if the board extends the snow removal contract through the winter of twenty twenty one, twenty two. There is no policy reference, and you see the recommended motion for next week below.
All right. Thank you. Any questions from the board regarding staff report F four?
So who is the contractor?
As listed on the staff report, it's John Withrow Excavating.
I couldn't see it. Okay. I'm trying to pull it up. All right. Thank you.
Welcome.
Any additional questions for Mr. Johnson? Hearing none. We'll proceed to staff report F five.
Thank you. This one is for the asbestos abatement and building demolition bids. No action on this will be recommended at the next board meeting. Reason for board consideration, the Board of Education owns several real property parcels, including parcels with schools that would be cost prohibitive to restore. Facts analysis, the board owns multiple buildings that have reached the end of their useful lives. These buildings are adding ongoing costs to the district's general fund, month after month, year after year. Three of the buildings that are past their useful lives include Bard Elementary, Martindale Elementary, and the North Shore School. Two local firms collaboratively developed bid specifications for the removal of asbestos that was done by Villa Environmental. And for building demolition, that was done by Whitman, meaning the bid development, not the actual demolition. The request for bids was published in multiple media, including on a state website and in one or more other leading construction-related bidding websites. All three of these buildings have asbestos in them. Removal of the asbestos is required before any demolition work can begin. Asbestos abatement or asbestos removal is specialized work that requires special equipment and special procedures. Bids were received from five companies, and a copy of the bid tab is attached to the board agenda. Recommendation to award the bid for this work will be made at a later date, but not next Tuesday night. Demolition of these no longer needed buildings will improve neighborhood aesthetics. In addition, it will reduce several types of ongoing costs, a few of which are electricity, parking lot depreciation, property insurance, roof depreciation, snow plowing, and vandalism repair costs. There's no policy reference. And this is for informational purposes this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Are there any questions from the board from Mr. Johnson regarding staff report F five?
Yes, Madam President.
You have the floor, Secretary Tripoli.
I, 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 when I, when I look at this, and I'm not sure where I got the amount of five hundred thousand dollars, is that somewhere in here?
Sure. If we look at the spreadsheet prepared by Whitman, it's probably two or three pages in. It's the, it'll look like a sideways spreadsheet. On the top right corner, it'll say bid opening.
Yes.
And you'll see over in the far right, almost all the way over to the right, there's a column that says total base bid. And the first one there is J M B demolition for five hundred one thousand five hundred sixty five dollars.
Okay. Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
I'm sorry. That includes the asbestos abatement and the demolition work.
I guess my concern is simply this. When I look at what we're talking about at this particular juncture, about demolishing buildings and with no information on what is the actual cost, because I struggle with this. I know that we've had vendors and contractors that have just really let our buildings go to pot. I don't know if it was intentional. I don't want to be accusatory. I know that Bard Elementary School has a strong history here as it relates to the African American community. And, and, and Ben Harbor history, there is a Bard Alumni Association. And so I, I, I do have some concerns. I don't want to, you know, linger on them tonight. But also, I think there was one of the things that was said about whole school having asbestos and having all these different things that they have and, and, and what's happening in the schools that our children are currently attending. I have pictures that I will be sending out to this Board of Education and to the superintendent. And so when I look at these sinking funds and this money, I think that for me, I think that there's loads and loads of work that need to be done in the schools that our children are attending at this particular juncture. So I'm not familiar with the sinking fund. As a board member, I know that's my responsibility to make sure that I have an understanding of what, how much is in these funds and, and what have you. But I, during my walkthroughs with the superintendent, the things that I saw in, 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 at Fair Plains, at A C A, where the ceiling was falling in, paint and, and, and stuff that, the same stuff that was there when I was a teacher there. These same situations are still in place. When I walked through M L K, had an opportunity to see some things, the wall, it, it, it looks, it, it, it's just not presentable. And so I don't know what this particular committee, when you say from the finance committee, because I haven't heard anything from the facilities, I'm, I'm not saying from the facilities committee, or the person that's in charge of facilities and what have you at that high school. It's just not good. So for me, I'm kind of struggling with this, and I'm, I'm quite sure we'll have more a more, an opportunity to discuss what it is. And I also think that it is very important that when we get ready to make these type of recommendations, we do have citizens here in this community. I don't know if a public hearing is required or not, but there needs to be some conversation if we're going to be transparent. Because the buildings that our kids are in, that money needs to, these buildings need to be updated, starting with that high school and the schools that our children are in at this particular juncture. So that is something that I would like to see, be able to have more discussion as it relates to this demolition of buildings and the thoroughfare. I know from a few years ago that Mr. Dylan Barnes, who is the owner of Loyalty Construction, had wanted to purchase Bard School. He'd had Jump Start, which is a youth organization, and he wanted to purchase it and wanted to do some work. And I really don't know what happened to that. But for years, and there was even discussion in the Alumni Association and just from people not actually in the actual Alumni Association, but those, I did a lot of work in that area and, and in that region. And I just think there's a lot of things that need to be discussed, because those children from that area, which we have several children in that area that go to high school, they don't just go to the Boys and Girls Club. Everybody don't go to the Boys and Girls Club. You know, they don't go across town. You know, and all those different kinds of things. I think there's a lot of things that we need to discuss in, in depth as it relates to this. But thank you so much for this report.
All right. Thank you so much, Secretary Tripoli. Any other questions for Mr. Johnson?
Madam President, may I please speak?
You have the floor, Trustee Bowens.
You know, I was actually in Marion Springs, and it was a building small. First, let me go, I go out to Bard, not Bard, Martindale, and I see what the neighbors have to live and visualize, the decay and destruction and dangerous environments for their kids. Windows open in the building. It's, it's deplorable. It's a dumping site. I've seen other buildings, I peek in and everything. I actually had Alex Cosowitz with me, and I showed him some of those. To see this price at five hundred thousand, it's not really expensive when you realize asbestos, just handling that could cost us millions. I think this is going to be a painful conversation, but doing the same thing over and over, it's not getting us nowhere. So I am, I understand the emotional ties we may have to these buildings and everything. I understand the pain. I support this proposal right here. And I also want to say that in our facilities committee, I did ask Dr. Johnson and the superintendent to develop a plan for investing in our school buildings. And I'm waiting for that information, and I'll be excited once we get that. But that's it on my end. I think this five hundred thousand, when we really look at it, is actually coming out cheaper than what it could cost us.
Thank you, Trustee Bowens. Up next, it looks like Vice President Bradley has his hand raised.
Man, yeah, can you hear me?
Yes. Go ahead.
Yeah, I would just wanted to say, I was, I was thinking back, you know, off of what Trustee Bowens was saying. You know, I do love Ben Harbor history, and sometimes it comes to that point where you have to look at things and count up the costs and think about where do we want to go. And then you, like I say, a lot of these buildings, they've been mothballed for years, you know, saw going way back to the later part of the first decade of this century. And when we look at things like that, you know, we have to really sit down and count those costs up and really sit down and say, deal with reality, what are we going to do? And then also with that building improvement plan, that goes back into strategic planning. So once we sit down and do a strategic plan, you know, we'll have an idea of where we want to go and how we can improve our buildings and cost, you know, cost-saving measure, also trying to look at how we can be, you know, financial stewards towards that, making sure that our building of our, of the park for our.
Thank you, Vice President Bradley. And we are aware, or it's clear that this is a hot topic item for us. It's going to be one of, of much discussion. So Mr. Johnson was pre-messaging this information to us so that we can have an opportunity to discuss it, digest it, marinate on it, and be prepared with where we are to come.
Madam President.
You have the floor, Secretary Tripoli.
Yeah, I just want to say to Trustee Bowens and to Vice President Bradley, emotional ties has absolutely nothing to do with what I'm saying. And so I hope that I can present myself in a way for you all to assume that I'm so emotionally tied to situations and circumstances that I can't. tied to situations and circumstances that I can't see what needs to happen for this district. However, there is an ethical imperative that must take place. And there is a discussion that needs to be held and there is more information that needs to be presented. And I'm, you know, I'm just concerned about at this particular juncture, at the work that we have in front of us at this particular time and making sure that the buildings that we have, do we have that money in place on top of the five hundred thousand dollars to make sure that the buildings that our children walk into, that they will be walking into in the fall, that they are, that they're heaters, they're not in these buildings in freezing buildings in the winter and burning up buildings in the spring and the summer. So I mean, you know, there's more discussion, so it's not emotional at all. It's just making sure that we, first of all, involve the community and that we also make informed decisions and that we're not led by anything, because you know, for this just to come up at this particular juncture, and you all, I think, are on the Facilities Committee. I never heard anything about this in my five months, going on six months, being on this board in any report from anybody that we were even considering tearing down buildings and what have you. So, you know, again, that's just, that's where it is, but please don't minimize it to being emotional. I'm, I'm, I'm beyond that. Thank you so very much.
Trustee Bowens, did you have a follow-up response to provide or there's two hands listed?
I'll, I'll reserve my comment for later.
Okay, Vice President Bradley, were you going to say something?
No, I just wanted to say, I do understand about the urgent need to repair our buildings right now, so I, I do agree. I think this has been discussed in previous meetings before, but not at length. And so, like I said, you know, there's just something that we didn't consider. And also I do understand the urgent need to look at our buildings. I know that we didn't get here overnight. This has been an ongoing problem. So these problems, I know definitely we can start addressing them. Like I said, that's where definitely our capital improvement plan and our strategic planning will come in handy.
Thank you, Vice President Bradley. And just to further provide clarification, so we don't have a designated plan for demolishing buildings, but we discussed the status of all of the buildings. And so when we say that this is something we've discussed, we've looked at each of the buildings, where they are, if they're in use, if they're not in use, if we think that we can bring them back up to par. So that's why this is not something that came to surprise to us, but I don't want it to be that we had a designated plan or something to that effect.
Madam President.
You have the floor, Treasurer Creighton.
Um, I, I just have a, I, I, I guess I have a general comment. Because as I'm hearing the different trustees talk about things and reflecting back on some things that we've talked about in my five and a half months, I do support the superintendent is saying we need a strategic plan. But I guess in response to that, there are a lot of things that I feel like we're moving forward with, without a plan. And we know that those that planned, that failed to plan, plan to fail. And so I guess I'm kind of concerned that we're bringing so many things to the table, you know, and we are looking to create a strategic plan. And so the things that we put in place right now without the plan, we will have to then backpedal. So I just wondered if we could kind of marinate on that as we think about and move forward with our agenda and with our staff reports, if we can just work on emergencies and things that we must do right now that's time, time sensitive. Because I think we're kind of setting ourselves up for failure to continue to bring things and push, you know, reports and, and, and push resolutions. And we don't have a plan. And so, you know, these things, they do, do become emotional because we're just kind of moving forward with things and, and it's not necessarily connected to anything else. And so I don't agree or disagree, you know, with the things that were said. I, I'm just simply saying, you know, sitting back without, you know, without emotional ties and being objective, I do, I do think it's important, you know, to advocate for what's right and what's right is as a board, to create a plan so that we can then move forward and see the plan, you know, unfold versus operating in silos or in committees and not really, you know, making sure everything is cohesive. And so I guess, you know, in a way to kind of sum up the conversation, I'm just thinking like, okay, you know, it's clear that we need a strategic plan and we need to be able to see these things connected because right now things are still real, you know, disconnected and kind of all over the place. And so I guess in the effort to hopefully be the, be the glue, I think that strategic plan will help us move forward with our work as board trustees.
Madam President, can I ask a question? For our strategic plan, how long do we anticipate on working on that? I mean, it's, I know it's a work in progress and we're continually working on it, but to where maybe this would even be put in the plan. Reason why I say that because I'm thinking right now it seems like we're bleeding out money out of our, out of the district by continually to take care of these buildings that we don't use and that are, are basically beyond repair. And so we're bleeding out money doing that when that money could be used to upgrade the buildings that our children are using at the moment. Now, I remember M L K, when I became principal there, they had stripped it down to, to the bare walls and rebuilt it as a, it was basically a brand new school. You know, but through the years and I don't know, money and, and wear and tear on buildings, of course, you know, it, it may be in a, a different state now, it's not in the, probably the best condition. However, to continue to just put money, and, and I understand about putting it in our plan and I agree wholeheartedly, it should be in our plan. But where in the plan would we put this so that we can work on it sooner than later? Because the, the longer we keep these buildings open, and I'm not on any committee, but I'm just, I'm just saying from observing, the longer we keep these buildings open, the longer we have to keep putting money in them to make sure that we have to keep insurance on it because if some kid wanders in and get hurt, we're liable. You know, we, you have to keep the heat on, you have to keep things, you have to keep the snow plow so that it's not an eyesore in the community. The longer we keep these buildings open and, and put money into them, the less money we have to put in the buildings where our children are actually attending. That's how I see it and that's just my opinion.
President Robinson, I, I, I think that Secretary, I mean Treasurer Creighton kind of summed it up. You know, one thing that's very, very important and, and also trustee Rocket Martin as well and Vice President Bradley as well, you know, that this was not something that, you know, that we just up and doing right now. And I think Mr. Johnson even explained that. You know, but when I had an opportunity to walk through Sorter Elementary School this summer, and they had a group of people from, who were from Sorter and what have you, and I, I think the, um, the young man that's, I'm in charge of the buildings and facilities, what bothered me was the stuff, the things that was in their desk turned over. This was just left after they closed that building. Nothing was taken out of those buildings, nothing was cleaned up in those buildings. Teachers' book were still there on their desks, there was writing on the chalkboard and, and I just think that it is important that we know as a Board of Education, first of all, I've never heard how much money has actually been spent at Bard on a yearly basis, since it's been closed as it relates to the district. How much money has been spent? I too went to Martindale when I was campaigning and I went back in the back and peeked in my old classroom and I think I got sick from just putting my head in the windows because the windows were torn out. You know, and it was just, a, a tree was coming through the roof. So are we really spending money on heat or are we just saying this? So I mean, before we make a decision as a Board of Education, not just because people bring this to us, show us the money. Show us, show us the data. And then I think when we start having data and those things, because you can't argue with data. You know, you really cannot argue when it's there. And I think that this is a part of our responsibility as trustees and members of this Board of Education that we have everything that we need in order to make the proper decision and it won't be assumed that, you know, we're operating through emotion and passion. You know, so that, I, I do agree with everything that everyone said and I do trust my colleagues in their different roles and, and what have you, you know, but we, as you said, we're working on our communities and how we're going to be able to communicate better and get the necessary information to one another so that we will be able to inform each other as well. Thank you.
All right. And so as stated, this is not anything that we're taking vote on now. We've spent quite a bit of time on this discussion topic, but Mr. Johnson wanted to pre-message it so that he could bring it to the board and it was clear that it's something that he is checking into for us. So we're going to move on, on the agenda to COVID-related grant funding, staff report F six. And thank you all for your input on that discussion topic.
Thank you. The reason for board consideration, I'd like to briefly present information regarding COVID-related grant funding. No board action will be requested on this next week, however. Facts analysis, there have been reports in a variety of media regarding the school district's COVID-related grant funding. And we have a visual that we, I'll ask Ms. Goodwin to present. It's a slide, actually a graph. She can click on the link, thank you. The first column shows what Mackinac Center reports that the district is receiving for COVID-related grants. And this is a little over forty-seven million dollars, that's the amount shown in green. The next amount, the amount shown in yellow is four, a little over four point six million. This is the amount that had been awarded to the school district as of May nineteen. And then way over on the right, the red bar represents the amount that the district has actually received as of May nineteen of this year. So Mackinac Center, forty-seven million awarded as of mid-May, four point six million. In our bank, three point two million dollars. So clearly there's a difference between what Mackinac is reporting that the district is receiving, what the M D E has officially awarded as of mid-May and what the school district has received. We do expect to receive anywhere between five point seven and about twelve and a half million dollars for what's called S R two. But we're still waiting for the legislature and the governor to work through that. And S R three, there have been reports on what those amounts will be, but we've not received any confirmation that we'll receive any of those reported amounts yet. Thank you. And also the funds are being used, S R one, which represents so far most of the district's funds received are for, being used primarily for teacher salaries and benefit costs that are not being funded by Title I.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Are there any questions for Mr. Johnson regarding the COVID-related grant funding?
Mr. Johnson, is there any reason why, if, if they're reporting out that we're, can you tell us why they will report that the district is getting forty-seven million dollars? And what is the holdup if this has been granted to Ben Harbor area schools? Is it a problem on our behalf that we're not filling out the necessary reports to get the money? Or is the money, what is it, in escrow? Why have we not received this forty-seven million dollars?
We're waiting for, I believe, the federal legislature, but it certainly not relates to any action or inaction of the school district or any school district in the state of Michigan for that matter.
Okay, that's what I, and I, and I think I, I really, I really appreciate that being able to see this, you know, visually be able to see it so that our community can know exactly what it is and what's happening. Because a lot of times there are things, it might be things that I presented and reported, but it, it hasn't trinkled down. So do you know when we can expect to receive this or is, is there any timelines or is it going to come just in a big lump or? I mean, do you have any idea at all?
I'm sorry, I don't have that information. Once we get more clarity, any clarity from the federal government on, or the state of Michigan regarding the S R three, we'll be happy to ensure with the board, but right now it's still pending.
I just want to add, that's, you know, we would love to see, you know, forty-seven twenty, not seven twenty-nine million. But the reality is this is all we've received. And I know I've had, you know, members of the community ask about specific amounts and, you know, we just haven't received it, you know, as you can see as of May nineteen, four million dollars, four point six million, received actually three point two, but we awarded four point six. So it's very helpful. I did ask Mr. Johnson if he can share this with our community. He also shared it at our finance meeting, just so we can have the accurate information out there. Although other reports say one thing, yeah, that's what they expect or project us to get, but the reality is this is all we have received. So if someone say, where's the such and such amount of money? We have, we haven't received it. It's caught up in legislation and that's what our state superintendent is fighting for and our legislators are debating about how to expend those to the district.
Thank you for your question, Mr. Triplet, Mr. Johnson and Dr. Townsend for your responses provided. Trustee Bowens, do you have a question?
I'm just going to say thank you for this report because it's a lot going on in the community. I got a phone call and a Facebook message and I told the president, I said, people are thinking we got this money. I also know, I believe last week, if I'm correct, and Dr. Townsend, you can correct me if I'm wrong, the state missed its deadline, federal deadline or something where they were supposed to vote on funding of some of this COVID money for education in schools. I know it was a big thing on Facebook with the State Board of Education members. So I'm just glad that we have the truth and I hope we're using the truth and spreading, letting people know when you see a lie, correct it out there. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions, comments, concerns from the board regarding COVID-related grant funding, staff report F six?
I just think, Madam President, that this, this type of reporting is critical because our people need to be informed. And I think that it is our responsibility as well to present this, you know, I don't know anything about, I, I heard about the forty-seven million dollars. This is my first time seeing this. And so I think when I, when I look at information, I, I look at some things that are out in the public and what have you. I, I, I don't think, I think one thing is being presented in this manner. There are some things that are happening at the state level. There are other situations and circumstances that, that happen, but it's important that we make sure that our citizens are informed and that we keep them updated on what's happening in those areas.
All right. Thank you, Secretary Triplet. If there are no other questions from the board regarding staff report F six, then I will pass it on to Mrs. Gail for Human Resources and she is beginning with teacher and training. Ms. Gail, are you going to be doing the presentation or is it Ms. Dr. Sheldon?
Hi, good evening, everybody. Actually, Dr. Sheldon will present regarding our teacher and training program, but before she does, I would like to use this opportunity to provide a piece of information here that I think will be useful. In response to several comments made during the public comment time, I would just like to offer the following. The number of certified teachers who have been let go or terminated by the district since two thousand nineteen is zero. That's all I have to say. So Dr. Sheldon can proceed at this time.
Hello, good evening, everyone. Elizabeth, you can go ahead to the next slide.
Dr. Sheldon, you're a little, your voice is a little more quiet than normal.
Okay, let me say, can you hear that?
A little bit better, yes, ma'am.
Huh, okay, let me know and I'll repeat. And I'm going to go through this quickly. Ms. Elizabeth Gail asked me to present on our teacher and training because there has been, there have been several questions about the program and what it means. So very quickly at, at the overview, we created the teacher and training overall umbrella and program, which actually falls under growing our own, which actually falls under teacher induction to help resolve our teacher shortage, to increase our teacher retention. It's in our initiative to grow our own and taking advantage of untapped resources. It's in our initiative to grow our own and taking advantage of untapped resources. We did this in three phases. But I want to make it clear that the phases still exist. We just did the first pathway. We did the second pathway and now we're working on the third pathway. We just did it in phases. Go ahead, Liz. Thank you. So our plan to resolve teacher shortage, we started out by doing a teacher credential audit. And then we started looking at and getting training from the M D E on the different types of permits. And uh, shortage permits and sub permits that, that a district could use. And what we found out and what we found out from them is that many of these, um. Many of these permits are underutilized. They were put into place to help with teacher shortage. They were put into place to try to push teacher residency programs. So we, we, we had M D E come down twice and do some training so we could get this information straight. Because it's all very complicated, making sure people are permitted the right way that go into several different systems. So what we really concentrated on with the T N T or the teachers in training were the use of daily permits. And the use of full year permits. Go ahead, Liz. So phase one, we started in two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty one, correct. Two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, by looking at our existing dedicated substitute staff. In doing that, we did some audits. Who has a bachelor's, who's close to a bachelor's, et cetera, because it makes a difference. Who had at least the thirty hours in, in the uh, major as the state deems them major. Thirty hours, not like a major, you go and get a bachelor's and that's your major. So they actually have different qualifications. Then we also asked all the principals, because at the time we, we did not know any central office knew very few of these people. The principals had to recommend someone to the teacher and training uh, pathway. So we took principal recommendation. So for the first year, we took all those recommended individuals. We put them through a thirty hour intensive institute that we hosted ourselves. We designed it like college courses. We had um, several people come in and do, some of our own people come in and do uh, some intensive. Um, training on strategies, different pedagogical strategies, et cetera. Then we also provided each of them with a mentor or a group of mentors and we met with them one on one. So that was the first phase. Since we've implemented this, our T N T program is now mostly. Individuals that do not have a bachelor's degree because it took us a year to get a pathway. To get our bachelor degreed people into programs. Go ahead, Liz. So our teacher, we use the umbrella term teacher and training. But we have actually, we actually break it up. We have teachers and residents. And so teachers and residents are teachers who are now in a schooling situation of some sort. And they are working toward the coursework they need for credential and they're working toward get, building their knowledge base to take the M T T C. Which is the Michigan uh, teaching test. That everybody has to take depending on the subject they teach. So we identified some appropriate E P Ps, which are educational providers. And we work closely with them. We also went into partnership with uh, Benton Harbor Education Foundation. And said, we need to really help our individuals get a teaching certificate and in some cases a degree. And Benton Harbor Education Foundation actually supported us. We went into a partnership with hashtag teach. It's one of the few alternative route programs in the district. And um, I can give information at another time on alternative route, but they have a very specific pathway they have to follow. It's not a traditional college pathway. It is um, really pedagogy and work experience. And so we were able to pay for almost ninety percent of that cost. Our people that are in that program, which we have right now twelve or maybe thirteen, I would have to look at my last number. We have thirteen that's in that program. We paid the bill. We asked them to sign a um, a disclaimer and. They, the, the amount that we asked them to cover comes out of payroll deduction. Because we did everything possible to try to make this less or or more financial friendly. For our substitutes now teacher in residence. Uh, over last year. We were fortunate enough to have Western Michigan approach us and we all wrote a grant together. And I say all Benton Harbor, Kalamazoo and Western. And we received the urban teacher residency program grant, which is very difficult to get. So now we have a second pathway for individuals to get a teaching credential. And in this particular case, a master's degree. At the end of the T N T program from the year before, we did a formal review. We took teacher recommendation. We looked at um, evaluations because we do have to evaluate. Any teach, T N T or T N R as we do a regular teacher to maintain the permit. And uh, we took those recommendations and asked them to move forward in these programs. Go ahead, Liz. The third pathway, which we are just now starting to dabble in is teacher cadets. And teacher cadets are actually high school students who demonstrate um, an interest in teaching. We're going to start the summer by offering a couple of teacher cadet kind of co-teaching positions. Over the summer, we hope to have up to ten cadets. We have uh, funding secured for sure for three cadets. And um, this is also a time to get the word out that we are looking for high school teachers who are thinking about. Maybe exploring being a teacher. And from this, we are going to be working with the C T E director, Ms. Uh, Ms. Shannon Rockette. To explore the opportunity of getting the, the C T E teacher cadet program back in uh, Benton Harbor.
Go ahead, Liz.
So those who participate in a program that we are providing some sort of funding for. They must qualify for a daily permit, but we prefer that they qualify for a full year permit. And there's a difference there, um, that they stay on track with the program requirements. Upon completion of the program and they're fully credentialed, they remain with the district for three years. We went with three years because typically that, that is what most residency programs offer. That's what forgivable loans require a three-year commitment after fully credentialed. They um, are assigned a mentor or an advisor. And um, they have to consistently receive an, an effective or highly effective teacher evaluation score. They also have to accept placement where they are needed. However, I can say to date, we have pretty much put people where they really have their passion and their strength. We have not been in the situation that we had to pull anyone and say, no, we have to put you there. Um, and then I mentioned about the payroll deduction of fees. So that was a very super quick um, overview of the teacher and training program. What you can see is multifaceted, more than just teacher and training.
All right, awesome. Thank you so much, Dr. Sheldon. Are there any questions for Dr. Sheldon or Ms. Gail regarding the T N T program overview that we just received?
Yes, uh, Madam President.
You have the floor secretary triplett.
Well, there are thirteen at this current time. How many of them actually live here? In um, in Benton Harbor, actually here in the community of Benton Harbor?
Is that question for me?
I believe so.
I wouldn't know that. That's not a prerequisite of us getting teachers credentialed.
Then I, I didn't ask about a prerequisite. I asked how many teachers, how many of the thirteen cadet, cadet? But thirteen teachers in training. Because the, in the beginning of the presentation, he said that we want to identify people that's going to be here. For some time. And I was asking who has that information? Do we have any? Let me reframe the question. Do we have any teacher in training who are citizens of this community?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, my next question, and, and we did discuss this in the meeting and in the presentation. Because there were, um, I had requested. Um, people who separated from the district and uh, there were lists of people and and we'll discuss this later. Um, at an H R meeting. But there were teachers of, or substitute, long-term substitute teachers. Who I'm, I do not see as members of the teacher in training. I know a couple of them. Um, are now down at the charter school. We have um. A young lady who graduated from Michigan State University. Who was teaching and working in our school district. And um, she eventually left our school district. And um, we have a young man who graduated from the University of Arkansas at Pine Bluff. Who was teaching, I guess they were in the teaching and training program, or I don't know if they even offered the opportunity to be in it. But there are two that I know that end up leaving our district. And they are now working successfully at Ben Harbor Charter School. So again, this is not new. This is a discussion that we had in the um. In the human resource meeting. And although it's not a requirement, I think it should be at the forefront. Because we do have students, uh, graduates and stuff who have graduated all from colleges and universities all over this country. And we have um, some of our graduates. Who refused to come back here for various reasons and they are being hired. I know three that have been hired in Detroit in a program very similar to this. And so um, I just, I'm, I'm just concerned, this right here is something that we're talking about teachers in training. And teachers in resident. Um, we, we, we need to have some type of commitment. And we also need to um, get out and start recruiting teachers to come here and work in the school district.
Thank you, Secretary Triplett. Any trustee Bowens, do you have a question or comment?
Just have a comment. I just want to say, um, thank you so much, Dr. Shelton, for this um, presentation. I had numerous questions um, about this. Um, I'm more excited to see about the C T E program because it hurt to see that our C T E program was dismantled. Um, I don't know if it was done intentionally or what, but um, I do have my own suspicions. But it's just great to see that that could be coming back and that could be vital. Um, I remember growing up, Matthew Bradley can testify. And people thought senior peers leaving the school early, going to work with these other schools and um, it was very vital. Um, the other thing I have is, are we using teacher in training with ed you staff? Like the, are these employees of the district or are we outsourcing them through ed you staff?
Uh, President Robinson, may I answer this?
You should, yes, ma'am, you sure can.
Uh, they are actually our direct employees. Um, they are hired through the district and they are provided benefits.
So if, yeah, I'm through the district, but I'm sorry, come out of line on President Robinson. And they can be anywhere, I can be in California and be a virtual teacher in training, correct?
In theory, yes, uh, but a vast majority of our, of our teachers in training are here. Uh, I'm only aware of one, just because we could not recruit for that position and we had an opening. Uh, we are actually recruiting locally.
The dynamic, I, and I'm sorry, this is my last question, Madam President. Um, if I recall my memory correct, and I could be wrong, wasn't there a partnership with Andrews University? Or is that no longer there? I thought Andrews was going to help. Teachers in training or substitutes that wanted to be teachers with the testing or something. Do you recall that?
I'm not aware of that program. Dr. Shelton, do, do you know anything?
I'm not aware of anything.
Okay, maybe I'm wrong. Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you, trustee Bowens. Vice President Bradley, did you have a, a question, sir?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to say it was a very excellent presentation and I uh, am happy to see that. Teacher cadets is coming back. I know I was a part of that uh, class back when I was in school and um. I think uh, Ms. McQuillan was our um, instructor for that now tech center. And I had an opportunity to go out and do student teaching projects with uh, various um, schools. And then we had a mentor uh, teacher. I know Mr. Don Pearson was one of my um, teachers at the time that I had as a mentor. And um, I think it was, I can't forget, I can't remember the teacher's name, but I know I had a classroom over a MLK two. So it's, I'm glad to see that it's coming back and I hope that we do get our young people inspired to go, you know, go into teaching.
President Robinson?
You have the floor treasurer, Creighton.
Thank you so much. Um, it was so, um. I guess for me, like, I was thinking and I, I was getting excited hearing about this presentation. I did get an opportunity to hear this presentation um, a few days ago. But um, so I guess I'm, I want to celebrate, but again, there's parts of it that as a committee, we didn't know about. So um, I actually in two thousand and ten was the last teacher cadet teacher that we've had, uh, when the program closed down under my, um. I was actually the instructor of that. I don't know if anyone on this call knew that. But um, so, so it's exciting to hear that it's coming back. Um, I would have liked to hear about that in the H R committee uh, meeting since we did just talk about that. Um, but um, I, I, I think it's exciting to hear about that. Um, I would just like to know or or hear about or even uh, be a part of um, conversation on how we plan to do that. Since it's something that we're going to start uh, implementing this summer and, and we've not had um, a person in, in about ten years. And, and um, so that's going to be a very interesting conversation that I would like to take part in. But nevertheless, I'm excited. I hope that they're able to recruit the three to five students that are interested in becoming um, teachers. Um, in two thousand, I, I was a teacher cadet um, for two years and then um, graduated, went on to Western. Um, from that program, it was under Carol Fecky and Mary Wilson. And so um, it's exciting to hear about that. It actually um, gave me an opportunity to change over from engineering as a major to education. And so um, I'm excited to hear about that. Um, I did go on and be the first um. To become a, a teacher, a certified teacher, under teacher cadet. And so that was exciting. And so to hear about that and to hear that, you know, this committee, um, the H R committee and the teaching and learning department. Is working um, to try to bring elements of that back is very um, exciting. Um, I would like to know. Um, and so this is my official request to really see the work that's being done. Um, for that and, and to that, um, as a part of the teacher and training um, program. Um, because it sounds like that there are a lot of components. And I, and I don't know if I'm, I'm right or wrong, but it sounds like you don't actually need a degree. To be a teacher in training and you don't need to be local. Um, so that's kind of like one of those things that it seems like we should have people knocking our doors down to be teachers in training. So that they can commit to our district and we can get what it is that we need. If we have people across the country that are able to do this virtually, that I would like, you know, to know. Or to hear more about this so that we can put that out there. And there possibly might be other people that are able to commit to that. Um, without having to find housing right away and do different things. So if those opportunities are available, I think, you know, we have to market that so that people will know. And we can't assume that others aren't interested. So I'm just excited to hear that we're being innovative. Um, but um, in, in effort to be who I am, I think it's important that we be transparent and that we communicate. So that people will know what it is that we're doing and, and we don't, and you know, everything is not just the taboo. Um, sometimes. And so I don't want to not celebrate the moment because I think it's great. Um, I think there are great ele- elements. I just think we have to do a better job at branding what it is that we're doing. So that we can control the narrative of what's going out in the community, um, in the educational world and in the community world.
Thank you, Treasurer Creighton, and thanks to everyone who, oh, I'm sorry, trustee Rocket Martin, did you unmute?
I, I too. I'm glad to hear about this again. We did talk about it in our meeting. They mentioned that the teacher cadet pathways program and the, the teacher cadets. And you know, and, and I say like this, it's never too young to talk about it, even with our elementary kids. Even with our junior high students, a lot of times, you know, they're forming opinions in their minds. What they want to do and what they want to be. And if we can get them steered toward education to be classroom teachers is wonderful. Uh, you know, they look, a lot of times, you know, I've, I've talked to college graduates. And I've um, I've steered a few into Benton Harbor. Uh, who had their mindset on being lawyers and um, you know, going into other fields. And I said, well, why don't you just try education and see? And they found themselves trying it and now they're staying. So I appreciate that. But for whatever reasons, whether it's the past. But for whatever reasons, whether it's the pay or what the, the constraints from the state, from the governor. I remember one time we had a governor who was so down on education. Everybody wanted to get out. And people that actually had education degrees coming out of college went into other fields, you know. And then when third, when I retired, 13,000 people retired. So that left quite a shortage in the educational field. So, you know, the more we can talk about it and, and present the positives to, to, to the students, to those in college coming out or even going into the high school students, to the junior high students, to the, you know, and let them know that it's not all just about discipline. It's not all about fighting back and forth. It's not all about that, you know, showing the good things of education, how you're really helping students, how you're helping people to learn new things and to do new things and, and to become, you know, different people, become what they want to be in life. It, it was a teacher that helped me to become a teacher, a principal, you know, like that. So we can, if we can put that in our children's ear, even in, in elementary, middle school, how great will that be? You know, that they will focus and, and follow that dream all the way through till they eventually come back and be an educator in Bitten Harbor. You know, I've recruited teachers. I've gone south and recruited teachers and, you know, and you have to, you have to sell your, you have to literally sell your district. And what better way to sell your district than to tell them of the good things that are going on in your district? So they will want to come here and work.
All right, thank you all. So we are going to move on to the teacher pay presentation.
Thank you, Liz. Several questions have been asked, some by the community, some by our board members. And in response, we have decided to do a short presentation regarding teacher pay. And hopefully this will provide some clarity. I should say that this presentation is a product of a collaborative effort between the Departments of Human Resources, Business and Operations, and Teaching and Learning. Next, please. A low teacher pay at Benton Harbor area schools is not a new problem. As a matter of fact, this issue was plaguing our district for decades. And we have spent considerable amount of time since, actually since October of 2019, doing research and collecting data and trying to piece together a story. And we were able to identify several distinct challenges. Next, please. In 2011, our teachers were forced to accept a 10% salary reduction. Next, please. Another challenge was that there was no contract, no collective bargaining agreement for several years. Next. And as a result, there was a multi-year pay freeze in teacher pay. Next. There was also a considerable lag in salary steps for a number of our teachers when the district was in extreme financial trouble. Next. Our overall pay scale was and still is uncompetitive. Next. All of those issues were compounded by internal inequity. And to give you a clearer picture, all of these challenges that are listed here affect roughly 30% of our certified teachers. So it is, the number is quite significant. Next slide, please. As we were looking to bring workable solutions to those challenges and we were deciding what to tackle first and how to proceed, we still had to remember and consider the following. We are a deficit district with considerable amount of long-term debt. So we had to look into a multi-year decrease in projected enrollment, which is a fact for us. Also, decrease in state aid. And again, the fiscal responsibility and sustainability as any solution that we would bring to teacher pay would not be one-time expenditure. It would need to be not, not only added to, into the budget, but sustained over time. Next slide, please. Now, as we look at our challenges again and applicable remedies. Next slide. Now, we were able to, to take care of a few of them right away. For example, that a teacher said no contract for several years. Now, we do have a collective bargaining effect, agreement in effect until June of 2022. And we also have a really good relationship with our teachers' union. As a matter of fact, we just had a really good meeting today. We do expect the negotiations to go smoothly and to be conducted and finished in a timely manner next spring. And as far as multi-year, go back, please. And as far as multi-year pay freeze, our teachers have received regular step increases under the current collective bargaining agreement since 2019. And as far as the other challenges listed, we have decided to remedy them in a four-phase plan. Next slide, please. So phase one of that four-phase plan was implemented and announced last summer. And then it was implemented in August of 2020. And what we have done there, all of our teachers with 20 years or more of continuous service at the district had received, had half of their 10% reduction restored. And then those teachers who were more than six steps behind, according to, as it related to their tenure at our district, half of those steps were added to their pay level. That was phase one. That was completed last year. Next slide, please. Now, phase two, and this is the official announcement, the memo on this, a joint memo on the phase. And I should mention that this four-phase plan is every time announced with a joint memo with the district and our teachers' union. Phase two plan includes the following. Teachers who have already received 5% of their 10% reduction will receive the other 5%. And that cohort will be 100% restored as far as that 10% reduction goes. And the remaining teachers who were affected by the 10% decrease, they will receive half of that in August of this year. And that, that will be calculated into their contract. Next, please. I should say that teacher phases three and phase four of this plan are currently being discussed. And we are trying to implement them as, as soon, as quickly as we are able to. In the meantime, we have plenty of extra pay opportunities for our teachers. For example, summer school, we have opened up opportunities for all of our teachers to teach summer school at $30 per hour. And this year, we were able to hold summer school for eight instead of the usual six weeks. Also, there is a summer school merit pay, which is based on student performance, which was in place last year and will be repeated this year. The students are tested at the beginning of summer school and at the end. And if the students hit certain markers, our teachers receive a merit pay at the end of the summer. And then all professional development that is outside of the contract and is paid at $30 per hour. And I will tell you, we have so many opportunities. We have weeks of professional development opportunities available during the summer. And their teachers can attend on a voluntary basis. Then we do have our annual merit pay, which is not necessarily a sure thing, but as federal dollars permit, that is performance-based. And I'm happy to announce that this year, all of our certified teachers have received effective evaluation rating or higher. And everybody will, will be eligible to receive the merit pay. And that will be paid at the end of the, at the end of the month of June. And then teachers also can participate in the teacher mentor program where they mentor new teachers and there is extra pay for that. So that concludes my presentation. And I just wanted to say that as we move forward, we're committed to finding solutions. Because here at Benton Harbor area schools, we do consider our teachers our most valuable human resource. I hope that was helpful.
Awesome, thank you, Ms. Gail. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns regarding Ms. Gail's presentation on teacher pay?
I have a question.
You have, the floor Treasurer Creighton.
Is there a separate scale for teachers in training?
Yes, yes, there is a separate scale for teachers in training. We do try to incentivize them. Once they become, once they become certified, their pay would go up and their benefits would be somewhat different.
Okay, any other questions?
Yes, I have a question. Again, I would like to thank Ms. Gail for this presentation. Because I really honestly think, I know when you said for years that they did not have a contract, that there were, they, they had contracts in those years. But everybody, not only the teachers, but the administrators, collectively decided to support the teachers of our district when they were taking their 10% cuts in hopes that we would be able to eliminate the deficit. And we, they were frozen, we were frozen. And when we got through with being frozen, we still had an $18 million deficit. So, you know, I don't know, people were honest, were being honest. Our teachers, I, you know, I think one thing that really concerns me is when we say that we're doing things and I, and I see some absolutely amazing things that are happening for our teachers. Our teachers should be at the forefront of any money that come through this district. And as I asked at the last meeting, when we have grants and anything that can be done, when we're talking about a grant or any money that's coming in to the district, that our teachers are at the forefront in that grant to make sure that they're able to get, be a part of it. When I, when, when I look at the merit pay and you said from summer school that they'll get merit pay at, at the end of it, are they going to be, are they going to have a curriculum, a, a specific summer school curriculum? Is the NWEA data and results going to be taken into consideration? Because we have, when we say we have merit pay and we're, we're doing these, these various steps and what have you. But at the end of the year, I'm not sure if the state examinations will be back in time for you all to have that particular data to work from as well. Our students are still failing on the state examination. And so that is a concern of mine. And I don't know what kind of supports our teachers will need in order for that to move. Because when it comes down to it, we have, I know that all year long, we've been talking about NWE data, NWEA data. And if we're going to have the M-step data back, hopefully that will be, something will be in alignment with those two pieces of, of, of testing that we're using for teacher evaluations and for principal evaluation. That that would be a part of the summer school merit program so that we can make sure that our kids are moving in the direction to be successful on the state examination. Because the state examination is what we're being measured by. So is that going to be the case or you guys are still working that out?
So there is, I'm not able to speak, I'm a little outside of my, my area of expertise here. So I'm not sure what kind of assessment is being used. I do know last summer that our students were tested. And then if they moved one band higher, there was a reward for teachers. Dr. Shelton, are you able to address what specific assessment is used for our students to figure into, into teachers' merit pay, summer school merit pay?
Well, this year is going to be a little bit different because we have a lot more in place. So it depends on the grade level and it depends on the curriculum that our teachers are teaching. High school, for example, they are going to be giving their own pre-test, post-test to measure that. I can jump down to elementary, you know, we got third grade reading law going on. So there's actually things that we have to do with third grade reading law. And we're going to use measures like AIMS Web Plus. We will use Delta Math. We will use NWEA. So there'll be various measures to use to show some sort of growth as far as the merit pay piece of it is concerned.
So we, do we, we, we have a curriculum. It's been stated several times that we have a curriculum. So that, that everybody should be, you know, everything should be in alignment with the, with the curriculum that we already have for the district. Is that not correct?
Well, what would be correct to say is that summer is completely outside of that loop. Summer is now a time to look at interventions and build a curriculum around the needs of the kids. Because we do actually look at the NWEA scores. We look at their specific deficits and say, we've got three kids here who have a problem with number ratios, et cetera, et cetera. So Delta Math is what we use all year long for interventions. But Delta Math could step in and, and handle that. So again, yeah, you're asking some really in the weeds questions. And it really is going to depend on each grade level and how kids are identified and how they choose to group them to get them the, the help that they need for whatever area they're struggling. But also, please understand too, that summer school this time around is also for students that want enrichment as well. So we'll, we'll look at, you know, what they do well and how to get them to the next level.
Yes, so I guess I, 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 I don't know what you mean when you say in the weed questions. But I was just saying that anything that, since we do have a curriculum, it seems like to me, and our curriculum is aligned with the state standards and, and expectations, then that our summer school, since our students are failing, should be based on closing the gap as it relates to the district curriculum. And I, am I not correct?
Yes, you are correct.
All right, thank you.
I have a question.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
You have the floor, Treasurer Creighton. And then after Treasurer Creighton, we'll go to trustee Rocket Martin.
Okay, I just wonder, what is the, what is the criteria? You don't have to necessarily tell me now, you don't have it. But what's the criteria for merit pay in general? Because I think you guys were talking of summer school. But, but Ms. Gail, Mrs. Gail's did mention that 100% of our teachers are receiving the merit pay. And so I just wondered, what, what, what is that criteria based on? Because I remember a few years ago, that about half or probably like a third, when it first started a few years ago, received it. And so I just wondered, you know, what has changed and/or what is the criteria?
I have the criteria. If you just give me a minute, I, I have not sent out the memo yet, but I have it ready. If you would just give me a second, let me pull it up. Basically, their, their evaluation, the summative evaluation had to come in at effective, as effective or highly effective with no categories rated as ineffective. That was one. The second one is they had to be employed between, I believe, October 1st and the end of the school year. And there is a third one that their student growth numbers had to be at effective or highly effective. So there were three, there were three categories for them to be eligible. If they hit all three, then they are eligible for merit.
Okay, so, but you can definitely say that in the evaluation cycle is not closed. And so I think that might be something that we talk about possibly in the future so that we can kind of make sure that, you know, yeah.
I'm not, I'm not clear, what do you mean?
I'll save my comment for another time.
Okay. Just to clarify, the evaluation cycle has been closed. I'm not sure, I, maybe I misunderstood something.
Okay, trustee Rocket Martin.
Yes, I may have missed this. But have you all instituted the, like, the steps, like where you have a BA plus the 18? And then you get the MA and the MA plus the 15? Do you have those steps in place?
So what we do have is in, in place is guarded by the collective bargaining agreement. And that information is posted online. Just so you know, if you go to the transparency, little, little square on our website and click on it, just scroll a little down, you will see the, the master agreements for our teachers and peer professionals. Towards the end, our teacher pay scale is listed. We do not have plus 15 or plus 30. We only have a BA and MA track. That may change in the future. We will see how the union negotiations go.
Thank you.
Madam President.
You have the floor, Secretary Tripple.
So the, am I correct when you say that the teacher evaluations for this school year are complete? And if, if, if that's the case, And if, 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 if that's the case, I didn't know, I know they were discussing at the state level whether or not they were going to use the 40% um, as it related to, to, uh, the, the testing and what have you. And they were trying to take that number down to 25%. And so that means that we have an order for the evaluations to be done, the cycle to be completed. Um, it, that's, it, it just seems to be a little bit early for that because all the data is not in. Unless you guys got the N W E A scores back and you got the M step scores back. So I was just wondering, you're saying that all of our teachers for this school year have been evaluated?
That's correct. As a matter of fact, our cycle, all evaluations were due May 7th. And we did, uh, receive the data about a week after that. Uh, and we are required by the state to report those to the state before the end of June. We're trying to finish our report, reporting, uh, much earlier.
Also, you did, uh, you did the evaluation, then you got the data a week later?
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
All right, any other questions regarding the teacher pay presentation? If not, I'll allow Ms. Gail to proceed to new hires. All right, you can move forward, Ms. Gail.
Uh, submitting for board consideration to improve the employment, um, and assignment transfer of the staff in accordance with the revised school code and other general laws of Michigan. And, and, and I'm sorry, I'm just now noticing, I, I wasn't clear on what Treasurer Creighton is saying earlier. I hope you don't mind me interjecting here. I think he, she may have been talking about this literacy coach position. But if, if it's, if I'm incorrect, please disregard this. I do want to say that in fact, this is not a new position and it existed at our district before. However, now the funding for it has changed. The position has not been filled because the person left mid-year. Um, I, I, I hope that's helpful, uh, but, um.
I have a question. So, 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 so are you saying that, um, so, so we had a literacy coach this year?
We had a literacy coach last year.
So literacy coaches are different than instructional facilitators?
They're, they're similar.
Okay, because upon the conclusion of our HR meeting, I thought that the doc, that Dr. Townsend, the superintendent, gave a directive that all of the positions would come before the board for approval. And then we would then, um, announce, you know, us filling the positions. And so I guess that's kind of what I was referring to, if, if you're, um.
Right.
So maybe Dr. Townsend can help us with that.
Yeah, but that literacy coach position was not a newly created position. It was just written into the grant. So we are reallocating resources of how to pay for the position. But that position existed in the district prior to the grant.
Okay, so, so I would like to, if we can get that, because it's not on our staffing list. So I apologize for that.
It's very similar to that, um, you remember that, um, ISIS position that was, that we had filled recently? Um, it was just an unfilled position, I think it was a gentleman, Mr. Newsom, that held that position in the past, just haven't been able to fill it. But we're now filling positions, uh, that's kind of been sitting. And literacy is our number one focus in the district. As you know, there's a third grade reading law there. And we were able to secure $3 million over the next five years. So the best thing to do is reallocate resources and repurpose how we effectively use positions in our district.
I agree with that, Dr. Townsend, and I appreciate that, um, I'm just only saying as HR committee chair, that we have to still follow board policy. And according to our HR staffing list, that was not a position on the list, which is the only reason why it was a concern of mine. I, I have no problem with filling the position. I just want to make sure that according to board policy, it needs to be on the record that the board voted to approve or not approve the list of positions, the list of new positions, and then fill them. And so that was my only, um, comment or concern towards that. And, and if that had changed, um, it would have been good to hear from that because the last that I knew on Wednesday, you did give a directive that those positions would come before the board. And so, um, I, I'm not trying to, um, stop literacy or stop the third grade reading law or even stop the implementation of the grant. I just want to make sure that we're following board policy, um, along the way, and that's all.
But although this is not a newly created position, you're saying the position must be approved?
So I'm saying until two minutes ago, um, it was to my knowledge that this position was a new position because that's what was presented to us in our last meeting. And so, um, at the end of the meeting, you gave a directive that these positions would come before the board for approval. And so.
Newly created, but I, I get what you're saying, but yeah.
I didn't know. You didn't know either, obviously, because you gave the directive. And so, I mean, I'm just saying, I, you know.
No, I think, I think I agree with you on his miscommunication because I just knew this was a position that wasn't filled. I'm just trying to, you know, make sure I'm aligned and communicating effectively with the board. But anything new according to policy will come before board.
Correct, but if the position was closed out, right? Um, then it would be new. If we close the position out and said it was a position that was eliminated and then to come back now, it would be considered a new position. So we did eliminate those literacy coach positions and we, and we, when we start calling them instructional facilitators, and correct me if I'm wrong. And so those positions are, for the most part, the, the job descriptions are parallel. And so I'm not against having literacy coaches. Actually, I remember having someone when I was an administrator in the district. I remember working with them closely. So I'm not against literacy coaching. I'm just saying, as it pertains to the policy, which is what governs me and what I do as a board member. Um, it said that if we have a, you know, trustees have voted in the past and, and I looked through the minutes, or they eliminated the positions. And so then they would be new positions that we're creating. And so, um, I would just like for us to do things the way that we're supposed to do. And that would be to provide the list with the job descriptions, how it's being paid. And, and on that job description, it needs to be listed that these are grant-funded positions so that we are not going into contract with individuals, um, no matter who they are, you know, but don't go on in not blind and saying, okay, these are three-year grant-funded positions. And moving forward after that, you know, we are not committing to X, Y, and Z because that's what we do as a board. We create positions and then we give them, you know, what it is that we're supposed to do, which these are grant-funded positions. Then it needs to be listed with the terms of the grant moving forward so that we can make sure that we're not, you know, overstepping what it is that we do as a government body. And that, and that's all I'm saying. I'm not against the positions. I'm not against them being filled. But we do need to, according to policy, create the positions that were eliminated, create them, give the job description, and then fill the positions. And that's all I'm.
To be clear, are we, are we saying that this position was eliminated?
So is, is it okay with both of you all? Because this actual, those two policies, I think it's 311 and 411 are on our board retreat for discussion. And I know this is something that we'll be voting on next week. So can we, this particular clarification, is this something that we can do at our board retreat? When we actually discuss those policies so that we can?
Sure, I'm fine with that. I just want to be clear. Uh, Ms. Gail, was that position eliminated?
Uh, no, and the person who was occupying the position left, um, I want to say towards the end of the year and the position.
It wasn't eliminated, so we're not creating anything new. It just wasn't filled. Um, but I'm more than happy to talk further at our retreat this Saturday.
Thank you. Uh, I'm going to give the floor back to Ms. Gail so we can proceed with staff report H1, I believe.
Then we have Melody Cardenas, teacher of special education at the high school. Beth Bovin, teacher of third grade at MLK. Samantha Fundinger, teach, our teacher at the middle school. David Bovin, teacher of social studies at the high school. And Brian Scoggan, assistant principal at the Scoggan, eh, eh, at the high school. And then we have some administrative assignments, um, as follows. Fred Rosenberg, principal at the high school. Leonard Moran, assistant principal at the high school. Ms. Shannon Rockett, principal at MLK. And Jordan Wright, dean of students at Fair Plains Middle, Middle School. Recommended action that the Benton Harbor Area Schools Board of Education vote to approve the employment of the aforementioned staff.
All right, thank you, Ms. Gail. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns regarding staff report H1?
Madam President, may I please go?
You have the floor, Trustee Bones.
Um, I'm looking at this high school makeup and I'm trying to see the logic. And if I'm looking at it correctly, it's going to be all men as principals, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, I'm trying to get the logic on, why don't we have a woman as a prince, principal? And can you explain the difference between a dean and a principal? And it, I know this is a personnel matter, so I don't know if you could answer this. Uh, is the principal that was at the high school being removed or lowered down to a different level?
Dr. Townsend, you're muted.
Yeah, the high school principal has resigned. Um, we went through a hiring process for the high school principal.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm not the high school principal. I'm talking about the assistant one.
I'm sorry, say that one more time, though.
I'm talking about the assistant one. I've seen Mr. Wright as the.
Oh, yes, the assistant principal from the high school is being transferred, um, to the dean of students at the Fair Plains Middle School. Uh, we're putting our young, our, our education staff in the best position possible to best support our students. Uh, my number one goal is academic achievement. And I mean, we're looking at the entire, um, landscape, uh, we putting our educators in the best position for our young people to be successful. And I mean, if you recall, this past year, we had two assistant principals at the high school were female. So it's not a, a gender, um, decision on our end at all. Not that way.
I'm sorry, it, it may be shaken out that way, but do you think when those young ladies get up in the morning and they go to that high school, they can have motivation of having a woman? I mean, I, I don't see, when you have a population of young men and females, especially in an urban community, like Benton Harbor, that young woman or that young lady could be inspiring and motivated. I'm just not understanding the logic of, I mean, if, if, that's what we're going to do, so be it. But I, I just don't understand the logic of that and it's interesting to me.
Sure, understood.
I have a question, Madam President.
You have the floor, Treasurer Creighton.
Okay, and just to piggyback off of what, um, Trustee Bones is saying, I guess I'm trying to figure out how an assistant principal is being hired for a position that's not open. And then, um, if, like he was asking, I think, um, correct me if I'm wrong, if a dean and an assistant principal is a similar position and/or is this a demotion?
Yeah, no, we don't look at it in terms of a demotion. If you think of, the middle school did not have an assistant principal um, this past year. So that position did not exist there. So there is no loss in pay for any individual that's making that transfer.
I have a question. Um, I'm.
I'm sorry, Trustee Trippleman, there was two questions, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Treasurer Creighton, what was the?
Second question.
Oh, oh, the second question, I see that you're hiring an assistant principal at the high school, but where is the open position?
So it's been a vacant position at the high school as an assistant principal, I believe, since October, that was never filled.
But it seems like you're filling it with Mr. Moran. So how does that work?
Right, so the high school had two assistant principals. Um, and we're removing one and transferring to another campus. I mean, I had a conversation with that individual who's preference is middle school, as a matter of fact. Um, so there will be an extra assistant principal opportunity at the high school.
Okay, I'm just wondering, within policy, again, I think you have right of assignment for open, for those positions. But as far as an assistant principal position, I'm just wondering, I, I don't know, that's kind of like, you know, it wasn't brought before the committee. And like Trustee Bowen said, it is a personnel matter. But it's kind of walking on dangerous grounds when we look at this thing. Um, because this was filled with an external candidate concurrently with another person being transferred and puts, and title changing. And so if we could, um, I don't know if that's a closed session matter or what we need to do to talk about that further. But I would like to get, um, some legal advice, um, if you will, to find out if that's something that we can do within policy or how that needs to be, um, done, so that we're not liable.
I just want to be clear, legal, for, for what? What, what decision needs legal advice?
Okay, no, I'm just saying, um, so we're hiring an assistant principal externally, who was, who was with our district before and left. And then we're transferring through right of assignment, I'm assuming, because it says administrative assignment. You're administrative assigning the assistant principal position, which would then, what are you? I, I, I guess I'm not understanding that language for this staff report. Um, because I, I see two positions being filled and there's one, only one open, and it's an external candidate. So for me, uh, I just want to make sure that we're not legally liable.
No, who are you referring to?
The two assistant principal positions.
What, what, okay, you're talking about on this list here, because it says.
Yes, sir.
Okay, what, I don't know what you're saying.
You, you have one saying it's a new hire and one saying it's an administrative transfer.
So I think essentially what Tre, I think to clarify what you're both saying is that.
Oh, she's, okay, she's looking at both of the lists.
I get, it's like, yeah, Scoggan is going into the new position or the open position. And then essentially Wright is going to the middle school and Moran is coming to the high school.
So the transfer between Moran and Ms. Wright.
I have a question as I look at this.
Okay, you have, you have the floor, Secretary Trippleman.
Thank you. First of all, when I look at this, I've never seen a posting for an assistant principal position. This has never come up in HR. We knew that there was a vacancy. Did we have applicants for the assistant principal? The principal at Benton Harbor High School resigned, but we already had an assistant principal, which was Ms. Wright. Okay, so now for me, this is the kind of stuff that I struggle with. This, this is where I struggle because we were in a meeting. Not one time was anything brought up about assistant principal, anything. And for me, if was Ms. Wright evaluated? Was the principal evaluated? How do we go to this one, from, 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 from one position all the way down? You could say it might not be, uh, uh, it's not a demotion, it appears to be a demotion. I don't know why she was not left in that position as the assistant principal because the principal resigned, that there was only one opening left for an assistant principal to be filled. So we haven't seen any interview. We haven't heard anything about any interviews. The only thing we were working on was the high school principal. And so we get an email and say, there might be some surprises, don't be, no, that's not the way that you operate. And so from, 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 from the appearance of this, I don't know who is who. I know one thing that I know for sure that really, really, really concerns me is when people leave our district and leave our district hanging and then they come back and take precedence over people who have stood with us and alongside of us. We had that discussion as it related to the, uh, football coach. But I don't see, I don't know how this assistant principal, um, Byron.
Scoggins.
Brian Scoggan. I haven't, I haven't seen any postings. Did you all have applicants? Did you all have, uh, was it put out there that we had an opening for an assistant principal? Um, position at Benton Harbor High School? Or was it out there that we have two assistant principal positions at the high school? This is very concerning to me. It does not look right. Not saying that these individuals might not be the one. But we are an equal opportunity employer and we do have policy. And I have never seen a posting for an assistant principal. I sit on the HR committee, never heard that there was going to be any changes. I asked at a meeting before, when that principal resigned, we have one principal at the high school and a, assistant principal at the high school. And my question was, are we going to bring in a man or some men to be at that high school as well? I had no idea that Ms. Ms. Wright, who, let me reflect back because I don't know any of these individuals personally. But Ms. Wright, when there was a vacancy at Fair Plains East, Ms. Wright stepped into that position and held that building down. This same staff identified Ms. Wright and moved her to Benton Harbor High School as an assistant principal.
I want to be clear, if I can, I know you can go, I don't want to miss an opportunity.
I'm not, I'm not finished. I'm not finished. I, 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 I really want to be able to get this out because I'm not in a rush.
But where can I respond?
When I finish.
But, but what do you want me to respond to?
When I finish, and I, I'll frame it at the end. When I finish, and I, I'll frame it at the end, I'll frame it at the end. And Ms. Wright, like I said, was an assistant principal. The, the HR committee had no idea that there were two openings for assistant principal, and if there were two openings for assistant principal. When did you all post them, and when did you have your interview, and who applied? So those are the questions you can respond to.
I'm gonna say this, and then I'll make sure we get all questions, I don't want to make, misspeak at all. Um, my job is to ensure academic achievement for our kids, and what my number one role is students first. Students, students, students. When I did my homework and looked at the high school principalship, I went back ten years. We had six principals, three interns, and a current principal now. I really had to dig into the toolbox and find the best opportunity to support our students. Now, my number one goal is academic achievement, no funny business here. Um, I believe I did everything within policy. I would definitely go back and double check to ensure, because I need board support. I can move this high school, as well as the middle school and all of our elementary campuses. Um, but I need to make the decision, I'm here every day grinding in it, so some information on the ground level people may not know, and some information I won't put out there for people's privacy purposes. But I gotta do what's best for kids as we move forward, plain and simple. But I will go back and double check and see if my Ts are crossed, Is are dotted, Ps are humped, and Qs are correct to ensure I'm not doing anything to violate policy. My number one goal is student achievement, student achievement, and giving our young people some stability. They've not had stability in about a decade, even at the superintendent level. So my goal is to really get our young people situated for academic excellence, and I can do that. But I want to make sure I do it with full board support, so I will go back and double check to see if we made any errors in the process. Because the goal is not to make errors, the goal is to get success for kids, so I understand that there's concern. And I want to address those concerns, so as we move forward, there's support and no more concern. I want to address the concern. When I put a principal in place, my principal have to have a team that he can roll with and give the young people the academic achievement. I do believe prior to, uh, taking over, uh, we were less than five percent college and career ready with regards to standardized testing. They, they tried to not only cite financial reasons for closing down the high school and potentially the district, but also chronic low performance academically. That's what I'm really good at, is increasing our academic achievement. So when I look at the entire landscape of what Benton Harbor area schools have, it's my number one responsibility and duty to put educators in their best seat possible to navigate and get our young people to post graduation to excellent enrichment opportunities. That's my number one goal, but what I will do, because of the concern of two board members and potentially more, backtrack to ensure we cross Ts and dot our Is, and if we did not, we will do that. But number one priority is to really get our young people steady, quality, leadership, so they can go on and not have multiple principals and switching principals out mid-year, and interim here, interim there. I need a principal, I need an administrative team, I need our young people graduating, going off to any opportunity that they like once they graduate. So just again, for clarity, there's no intention on my end to buck or go around any policy. I will go and double check to ensure no mistakes were made, and if mistakes were made, I will ensure that we correct those mistakes. Because I, at the end of the day, I need board support to do great work for kids. And if I don't have that, I can't do great work for kids, we can't do great work for kids. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to ensure that we did everything we were supposed to do. And if we did not do what we were supposed to do, I will make sure we correct those errors.
Dr. Townsend.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Dr. Townsend, this right here is about policy. First of all, we have, we had not identified a principal for the high school. This right here is a recommendation at this particular juncture. The principal at the high school, once that person is identified, that's what we were working on, should be the individual that take the lead as identifying who's going to be their assistant principal.
Exactly.
And those jobs should be posted. I keep, you keep saying this over and over and over again, when I was one of those six that sat in that seat at that high school as a principal, and we're not going to even have that discussion, because it's not even relevant, period. But you keep bringing it up, so I'm going, I'm going to address it. I was one of them, okay? And so historically, the thing is, from the very appearance, it does not look right. It does not appear to be right, it is not right. These jobs have not been posted. We have not identified a high school principal, and so whatever.
What, what do you mean, we have not identified a high school principal?
Okay, so I'm, ladies and gentlemen, it's, it's very important for the sake of the meeting that you are um, asked to be acknowledged to get the floor, and then let me give it to you, because when we start talking over each other, this is how we end up in a situation of chaos um, in our meeting, so I believe Secretary Triplett made a point, Dr. Townsend was attempting to respond, but I believe Ms. Gail's hand is also up to respond to something.
Let me, let me, let me say this, and I'm, I'm, I'm gonna close this, I'm gonna close this conversation out. This is not the first, this is not the second, this is not the third, this is not the fourth time that I have been interrupted and disrespected. So at this particular point, I'll bow out of this conversation and let them do what they do, and I'll do what I need to do. Thank you.
Uh, Mrs. Gail, did you have feedback for Secretary Triplett's question? And then I know Treasurer Creighton had a question as well, so we'll go to, I think Ms. Gail was attempted to respond to Secretary Triplett, and then I'll go to Treasurer Creighton.
I just wanted to offer a fact check. The position of the assistant principal, in fact, was posted for several weeks on our website, and there was the application process and the interview process.
Okay, thank you so much for that clarification, Ms. Gail. Treasurer Creighton, you have the floor.
Um, that, that just kind of brought up another point, because I think to his point, he was saying we've not heard about that in HR committee, but um, I was just going to um, to say um, that um, in an effort to make sure that we don't have to participate in this kind of dialogue back and forth to this extent, I think that's why it's so important for us. I guess for me, it's more of like a commercial, because, you know, there are so many things showing that we have to make sure that, you know, we're doing what we need to do as a board, so that, and we're following policy, so that, you know, policy is one of those things that, you know, it's, it's a fact, it's what we use, it's the law, and so we have to use those things to govern our work, a- and it's not personal. I mean, then I guess the other thing that I was gonna say, and I just would like on the record, um, as a commercial, you know, I appreciate, you know, that the consistent message is student achievement. But the fortunate part about it is that the superintendent has been here for sixteen months. The unfortunate part about it is that for this entire school year, you know, we've not had students in the building for the most part for a full week. And so I think um, we have to make sure that we are consistent with our messaging, you know, because there are some things where, you know, I do pick my battles on what I'm gonna speak, it might not seem like it, but I do. And we have parents and different people, you know, across social media, in their communities, in churches, in grocery stores, that will stop me as a board member, you know, to remind me that, you know, of the inconvenience of having students at home, or not having a consistent school week of instruction. You know, changing schedules, PM changing, AM changing, days of the week changing, days being canceled due to testing, due to teacher short, you know, it's so many things, and as a board member, you know, this is a volunteer position. But we do have fortunately a paid staff to make sure that they're doing exactly what Dr. Townsend in his messaging is saying, the priority should be educating children. You know, we're not in the clothing business, we're not in the food service bill business, we're in the education business. And I think it's important that we make sure that our messaging is consistent with our actions so that, you know, we don't have to keep trying to prove what it is that we're doing in a season of branding. I think we're brand, we're trying to brand, you know, we're trying to recruit, we're trying to retain teachers, students, families, you know, support staff, parents, subs, everything. And I think we need to be consistent, not just verbally in our messaging, but at the board table in, in a boardroom, when, when, when the public is not present in a classroom, you know. I, I just think we have to work on that, and I know that we are um, moving, you know, and I realize that wrong wasn't real overnight. But, but I just think if we could continue to try to work towards what it is that we're doing and not taking things personal. So um, I heard a parent say during the board comments that, you know, she said something about doing this for free. Well, I think all seven of us, the board members, you know, are the only volunteers, you know, that's, that's um, that's doing this on our side of the table, and so we are a hundred percent volunteer. And so, you know, we are doing something that we're passionate about, and we're doing it free. And so those that are employed by the district, you know, has to understand and appreciate the stance that we're taking, because many people, I mean, I've worked the job for years, and, and I wasn't willing to work free. But right now, this work that I'm doing as a board trustee, a board, a member of, of the board of trustees, I am doing it free of charge because I'm that committed. And so I think it's important that we not take those things personal, but to just know that we're trying to inspect what it is that we expect, so that we can move forward and be accountable to our customers, which are our students here at Benton Harbor Area Schools. You know, today I celebrate twenty years as an alumni at Benton Harbor Area Schools, and so I, I mean, I do take this serious. And so I think, you know, it's important that we do fill these positions, but we have to make sure as a human resource committee and as a human resource department, make sure that we're doing things that won't open us up to liability, you know, in the future. And, and, and that's all I'm saying, and I'm not trying to do anything else but to make sure that we're making students first a- a- and that we're following policy concurrently.
Madam President, and I do want to say this as it relates to uh, the selection of the principal. After we had our interviews and what have you, and, and coming up, I am in full support of the principal that had been selected, of, of Mr. Roseberg, who is being, so, who has been selected to become principal of Benton Harbor High School. But one of our, my questions in the um, HR committee, even with the candidates that, that interviewed, was that I do not want these people to be set up and to be destroyed. And I think that it is important that whoever is in charge of that high school, that when they get ready to select their team, I don't know if these individuals are someone that the principal, the recommended principal of Benton Harbor High School is someone that he want, that, that he wants to work with. But we cannot make these decisions, because it makes it look shady. It, it, and, 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 and the sequence, again, I have never heard anything about we were looking for assistant principal, that assistant principals even at the table, and I don't care if they were on the website. We are the HR committee, and we should have that information, and we should know it from the HR division and from the superintendent. We have been in these meetings. And so, again, Mr. Roseberg, if he, if he is confirmed, because I'm only one vote. If he is confirmed as the principal of Benton Harbor High School, I think all of those decisions that he should be a major part of it, and he should not be a major part of it prior to becoming voted on as the principal. And so this, to me, it doesn't, it, it, I, I don't know, uh, Mr. Skagen. I don't know personally, Mr. Morant, and I don't know Ms. Jordan, right? I don't, but I, for us to, I, I think it's just, I think it is for. Thank you.
Yeah, I do want to say, my number one goal is to support our principal, and I make sure um, he has a team that he needs to move our young people and the stability that our young people need. I mean, he knows our incoming eighth graders, he was a phenomenal uh, principal in this past year during the pandemic, and I know he has a a track record of success. And um, I'm a former high school principal, I, my goal is not to set up any administrator in any building, any teacher in any capacity. Our teachers junior tell you that, my staff will tell you that, I'm in all these meetings, I'm riding or dying right along with them. Um, but I ensure that we get our principal individuals that he know he can move the needle on academic achievement with. And my hope, as we move forward, is that not only do I talk it, but I walk it. I don't want it to say, they're just saying academic achievement, but we don't see academic achievement. I believe over time, we will see it. We're coming out, we're, we're emerging from a pandemic, very difficult. As you can see, loaded agenda. Nothing can wait, grinding daily, and I do understand in the grind, potential miscommunication, things can be a miss. But it's my job to make sure that's not the case, as we continue to not only form and storm together, but learn and grow together. Other, um, no funny business on my end, not looking to play games, set anybody up. Students first, point blank, period. And I believe I did my homework, and I believe I set our young people up at the high school for success. I do hope that over time, I do earn the trust and support of our board uh, through my educational leadership, and I do have confidence in myself that I will get there. But I do understand that we're storming right now and forming, and that we'll get to a place where we're norming, and then ultimately performing. Um, and we'll earn our families back too, because of the fruit of our labor. But thank you so much for your comments, Board of Trustees. Again, I'm gonna ensure we're crossing Ts and dotted guys, because I gotta have your trust first. If I don't, if my board don't trust me, my community can't trust me. The community can't trust me, our families can't trust me. Um, or.
President Robinson.
My leadership, but the number one goal is to get our young people set up for success, and I'm confident I'm doing that now. And hopefully over time, our data suggests that we did the right thing for our kids.
President Robinson?
Okay, I'm gonna allow Treasurer Creighton to have a floor, and then we are going to proceed after, so go ahead, Treasurer Creighton.
And, and to be clear, um, I, I'm not, I, I'm not even, none of the positions or nothing that I said is against any of the individuals, and um, I just, again, want to make sure that we're following policy. Um, I think what I heard Secretary Triplett saying, um, in my analogy, I gave a few months ago at a meeting, is that we wouldn't put a shirt on top of our jacket. We have to put our shirt on first before we put the jacket on, because the jacket is out of wear. And so I, I think, um, to be clear, as the HR committee chair, I'm only saying that, you know, we, we are aware of one position being open. And so we feel that position, and then if the actions moving forward would be to support the person in the position and the vision of the position, then we do that. But it's important that we cannot put our jacket under our shirts. That we have to do what it is that are, that's within policy, and, and as the, you know, overseer of our superintendent and his employment, um, when we say that we're following policy, um, it's his responsibility to make sure that he's the person that's following the policy alongside of us. So we create the policy, and he's supposed to implement it. And so Dr. Townsend, it's not a shot at all, we're just simply saying that you have to put your shirt on before the jacket. You know, that there's a sequence of events that must take place in order to move forward. And so I don't want the messaging to get misconstrued, because this is not personal. I, um, I've worked with one of four of those individuals that were listed, and so I don't have a problem with any of them or anyone. I don't, I don't, you know, I've been gone long enough to where people, I don't even remember a work history of individuals five years ago. So this is not personal. It's just about policy, and I think it's important that we keep that in the forefront of our mind.
I do agree, but please let me know what policy is not being followed, so I can ensure, because I didn't believe I was breaking any policy. Um, but I'm not perfect, so it's, if you feel like a policy is being not followed, uh, please specifically identify that, so I can ensure that's not the case.
Okay, so we're, if you all have additional follow-up or feedback regarding the uh, staff report H1 for the new hires and transfers, feel free to send that information to um, our exec team prior to our meeting next week, where they will be wanting us to actually take vote on the individuals. Next on the agenda, we have separation of employment.
Reason for board consideration, a list of employees whose employment relationship with the district is or will be separated is submitted to the board each month. Facts analysis, eh, and analysis, it is recommended that the Board of Education votes to accept the separation of employment of the following staff. Policy reference forty-one forty, resignation and termination of staff. Jely Busby, teacher in training at the high school by way of resignation. Recommended action that the Benton Harbor Area Schools Board of Education vote to accept the separation of employment of the aforementioned staff.
Any questions, comments, or concerns regarding staff report H2? You can proceed with H3.
Do you mind if I just read the name? As opposed to the, uh, the whole staff report, Elizabeth Perkins.
Yes, ma'am.
Teacher, music. Elizabeth Perkins, uh teacher, music teacher. That's it.
Any questions, comments, or concerns regarding staff report H three for Ms. Perkins? All right, you can proceed to H four.
Wendy Windland, academic interventionist. Also at the end of the school year.
Staff report H five.
Amy Story, teacher in training, also at the end of the school year.
Any questions, comments, or concerns regarding staff report H five? All right, you can proceed with H six.
Diane Thomas, peer professional resignation effective date February second.
Any questions, comments, concerns regarding staff report H six? All right, thank you so much, Ms. Gail. Do you have any follow up comments or clarifications to provide to your section of the agenda? Otherwise, you're all set.
Thank you.
Dr. Shelton, teaching and learning.
Okay, thank you. Liz, if you just let me uh do the screen, please. Thank you. That way we can zip through this one because the other one's a little bit longer. Um this is our extended covert learning plan for June. It'll be uh voted on next week to approve, and I would like to say that this will be the last one because the extended covert learning plan only covers the academic year. We will look at final numbers, uh progress on educational goals, uh weekly interaction rates and instructional delivery. We did put in preliminary data. Uh we are still getting N W E scores in. Uh we did it a little bit differently just to look at the the longevity of it. Kindergarten is looking great. Uh I do have to say, let me use this, this might help. I do have to say that um that is what we need to be looking at. We will, you will notice in the next few slides with the different grades that this this fall score is extremely high. We think that is due to a lot of virtual testing and maybe students receiving some assistance. So it did change when um we got them back in place. And let me clear this, please. Sorry, 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 sorry. Let me get rid of this. Fourth, fifth grade, again, you're gonna see that fall score being super high. So it's a little out of character overall. Again, um with six, eight grade math, it's not too far out of place, neither with re- reading. And then ninth grade, reading ninth or eleventh, um they did invite all the students in. And so that's why that actually looks a little bit better and it's not such a huge gap. So that's just a quick overview, a very quick overview of our educational progress that we have to report out on. Weekly interaction rates again are looking okay. We did anticipate that this last week in um May would look a little different at the the secondary level because we know the kids scramble in to try to get, you know, last minute uh credits done for graduation. And um of course, we're in this week, so we can't give you this. So next week, I'm gonna try to give you everything because students finish on Thursday. So I'll give you two days worth of data and we'll just we'll adjust accordingly uh for one interaction rate. And then we will be voting on, there was no change at all to how we're delivering our instruction. And that's it.
All right, thank you. Any questions, comments, or concerns from the board regarding the extended learning plan update? Hearing none, you can proceed, Dr. Shelton.
Thank you. Um very difficult to determine how to do this because we have a lot that we are asking for approval uh next week. I did invite certain people to present their area and hopefully they're still they're still on. But I'm gonna go ahead and start and I am going to tell you how I set this up. I did go with what needs to be approved and then a little explanation of, and then in the end, what the numbers look like of each of these sections. Uh President Robinson, I'm happy to stop after every one of those and for comments or go through the entire, which are all of my reports, my status reports, and then talk about it in the end. Please tell me how to proceed.
So if I'm understanding correctly, your presentation is addressing all of the reports?
Yes.
Let's go through each one and we'll stop briefly just in case someone has questions about that section.
Perfect. So for today's meeting and for next week's meeting, we have um several approvals that we are looking for. We are, we are finishing developing a textbook adoption guide. We are, we're finishing, uh we're in our last draft of a student study team guide. We are looking for approval of some digital literacy that was presented to you a few um uh maybe two board meetings ago. Um we're looking to get our student computer purchase approved. It's a very large amount and we'll explain why. Uh the big idea application, which we're gonna actually give you an explanation of, is Upton Foundation and a um a grant that we're applying for, but we must have uh board approval to apply. And then a CTE equipment transfer, we must have board approval to move equipment. So for the textbook adoption, it is T uh T two staff report, adoption of guides and handbooks. Uh Dr. Goble, are you on?
Yes, I am.
Go for it.
Yeah, so I'm gonna be speaking about the textbook adoption guide and the student study team guide. I just want to highlight that um the textbook guide is twenty seven pages and the student support team guide is twenty pages. So I'm gonna try and give you the quickest, most concise overview of each of these tools. Before I do that, I just wanted to thank uh Trustee Rocket and Secretary Triplette for your feedback last week. It was helpful as I was going through the next iteration of revisions. Um and these are both collaborative documents done with large teams. So the textbook adoption guide um is twenty seven pages. Again, you can click on the link in the agenda to see more details. What I want to highlight about both these guides, I suppose, is they are purposely digital. Um we have a little disclaimer at the beginning saying, because these are teacher facing guides, you know, as opposed to like a special ed guide, which you would want to print out a thousand copies and give to every special ed student. These are internal documents, so to conserve resources, we wanted to do them digitally. And there are so many digital resources that go with each thing that we wanted people to have easy access to those hyperlinks. So just to give you a quick overview of the adoption guide, we uh talk about, you know, what its purpose is. Um we we, the second part is all about what a guaranteed viable curriculum looks like. The third part, we articulate a textbook adoption process, including a large text, uh I'm sorry, a large checklist to guide those committees through said process. Um we have all the board policies in there around vendor relationships so that we're doing purchasing in an ethical way, you know, without any conflict of interests. Um then there's a second separate section on budget and funding considerations. And then I think the most exciting piece of this document are the appendices. Um the first and the second one being the most exciting in that we did a full audit of all the curricula in the district when they were last purchased in terms of textbook, that was textbooks that were anchoring said curricula. And then we did a ta- a six year, I believe, textbook um adoption schedule. So everything is scheduled out, started for next year, two disciplines at a time to refresh and re-articulate curricula across the district. Um and then we have a very large um rubric to help the committee evaluate, you know, the quality of the instructional materials. So that is the thirty thousand foot overview of that guide. Again, you can click on it and you can kind of go and and explore it quite, there's a lot to explore. But I believe at this juncture, we're just gonna take questions before I go on to the other guide. Is that correct, President Robinson?
Yes, sir. So are there any questions currently regarding the textbook adoption guide?
Um do we, do we have, uh I'm sorry, President
What, Treasurer Crichton?
I apologize. Um but um do do we currently have a guide? Is this something? I just wonder what, you know, I know that you guys have put a lot of work into this. Um I just wonder, you know, where did it kind of come from? And then um also, it was some, I don't know, it was a couple of things. It seemed like it was still in the draft form. So I wasn't sure um if there's a timeline on why we need to do this right now. Um so those are kind of my two questions.
Um so the first, I'll take both. They're both pretty doable here. Um the first one is um to Dr. Shelton, in my knowledge, there was no formal textbook adoption document. Now, that doesn't mean one isn't living somewhere on a hard drive that was used at some point in time in the near, in the near past. But we did not have access to that. So Dr. Shelton did the initial kind of outline. Um I fleshed it out using models from all over the country and you'll see in the textbook guide, there's a extensive bibliography at the back of kind of best practices and other things that we looked at. Um and then a team of instructional facilitators did a pass on that one. Um in terms of draft, um I finished that guide, um I had formatting stuff, so I just did the fancy table of contents. Um in the first two hours of the board meeting, I finished it up. So there should be no stray or errant highlighted things as of right now. Um if you refresh the document, this should be a ninety nine percent draft that's pretty much ready to go. I'm not saying there might not be a typo or something, but it is, it is cooked and good. Does that answer both those questions?
Thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
And just for clarification for um members of the public that might have the agenda pulled up or uh our board, the actual guide itself is hyperlinked into the agenda. So I know we're watching the presentations, but all of the documents are hyperlinked. Um any other questions regarding this textbook guide? If not, we'll go to stu- Uh Dr. Goble, were you doing student study team also?
Yeah, I'm a two for tonight, so yes.
Okay.
We do have um something
Go ahead, go ahead, Secretary Triplette.
Yes, we did discuss when this was presented that um the concern that, you know, the concern that um I had as it related to the principals not being a part of this um process. And that the I Fs were the only ones that were part of the process. And Dr. Goble did add um the principles in there, but as uh you know, for me, the as an afterthought, because when we talking about textbook adoption, I think that our principals, it is my hope that our principals are not just principals, but they are instructional leaders as well. And so you said that there were several people that worked on this. So I was looking at the end of, at the end of the document, are those people listed that worked um on this particular textbook adoption?
Yes, yes, absolutely. So if you click on the hyperlink, I think the second page is the um designing for digital collaboration disclaimer. And then the third page is the um list of the board as well as all the contributors that worked on the guide. So that's page three and both of the guides before the table of contents.
So when are you gonna bring the principals in or are you all planning on bringing the principals in since they were not a part of this initially?
Uh I'm gonna pass that to Dr. Shelton.
Um there is no plan to bring the principals into developing the guide. Um I don't think our principals look to us to, I mean, this is very time consuming. We we develop lots of guides. The prep, the textbook adoption process, that's a whole different, I mean, now we have the guides now, we flushed out the rubrics. You know, we've done the technical stuff that that has to be taken care of at the central office level. But as far as the committee is concerned, that will involve all stakeholders.
Yeah, and I think I just want to add to that, uh Secretary Triplette, that um in that disclaimer, in part, I added page, I think it's page two because of our discussion last week. I mean, the beautiful thing about, you know, working in Google Docs is that it's gonna be, you know, it's a live document in the sense that um we're not gonna be making edits after the board approves it, but you can make comments, right? Um anybody involved in a committee may find that something, you know, needs to be revised or something could be improved. And there's, you know, once, I guess, once we take it out for the test run this year, we're gonna get feedback from all the committees that work with the document, which I think is exciting and and it is highly probable, especially in those core subjects, that the committees will include principals.
Yes, I would just, I guess, um if 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 the I Fs have the I Fs been communicating closely with the principal, letting them know, bring them up to speed on the work because uh again, they are the leaders of the building.
Yeah, so I believe that this has been shared at the IF meetings and in general, the I Fs and the literacy folks do communicate with the principals, but I don't know what the specifics of those communications are. But just echoing Dr. Dr. Shelton, I mean, I think that that she nails it, right? This is that really crazy central office technical work that sets up the adoptive work that the principals are integral to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Goble. Next, we have student study team, SST guy.
Yeah, so again, I mean, I'm so glad people are asking these questions in the last guide because some of them may apply to this guide. So with, by way of kind of ans- pre-answering those questions, um there were uh fragments of SST guides floating around the district. Um but they were not very comprehensive or fully fleshed out. They were usually one to three pages. Um this is a twenty page document. Um and it is loaded with digital resources at the back end. Um and this one, um you know, we have a lot of collaborators and one of the most important collaborators on this was the special ed department because there's a highlight that a student study team is completely different from an IEP or REED process, right? So ideally, um I think a lot of people, what what happens oftentimes, right, is people jump from, and being, I'm exaggerating on purpose, but they jump from, I have a challenge with a kid, to put him in the special ed or suspend him, you know, when there are a whole bunch of steps in between there that we need to make sure that we're doing to make sure we're servicing our students and so that they can succeed. So the idea behind a student study team is a teacher, a staff member, somebody on a student support team raises an issue or concern about a student. And then that student study team at every building, they should be meeting every week. Um and they should also have a crisis team kind of on deck, if you will. If anything really dramatic happens with a kid, um you want to be able to study the situation and support them in the moment. But ideally, you have a weekly um or bi-weekly routine where teachers, parents, sometimes students, if it's at the high school level, um get around the table to figure out how they can help kids move forward. So by way of explaining the um kind of overview of the document, if you're in the document, again, this is page four. This is the table of contents. So part one, you know, is really just what is an SST? What does it look like? What are its goals? Um how does it fit into national and state initiatives? So um ASCD does the whole child initiative and the Michigan Department of Education has adopted that as their framework as well. Um and then, you know, we talk about how the SST aligns with special education. And that is a really critical piece here, um again, because a lot of people jump to, let's do a REED when there are lots of tier one and tier two things that you can do to support a student. Just to add clarity to those terms, tier one is a whole class intervention. You know, sometimes teachers can adjust their curricula and their instructional methods and students will magically perform better. Um and tier two are kind of like small group or targeted groups of kids that you work on, you know, within a building. So from there, we outline the SST process from beginning to end, what a building needs to do to set up, how they gather the data, how they identify students, um and then how they develop action plans and the type of action plans. Um so and then basically, there's a huge bank of digital tools and resources that includes some of the templates that have been developed by various buildings in the district. So the team that helped on this document was able to kind of pull together existing resources that people may want to iterate or revise on going forward. Um and then, you know, we have um a work cited and we have two appendices here with just kind of basic code violations by board policy and how one might address those um in a more tier one or tier two fashion. Um and then we just kind of have a list of basic tier one and tier two interventions. So um this system and structure is absolutely critical to ensure student success, especially as we get more students. Um you know, when the population goes back to normal in a post-COVID situation, um we need to be able to support students in a timely fashion, um connect with their families and caregivers and create plans to make sure that they succeed. And the one last thing tying into special ed, you know, if you do a plan for six to eight weeks and it does or it doesn't work, then you do another plan of six to eight weeks. And that's the point at which you might refer a student out to special ed or you might kind of do some more detective work to see if there's some developmental issues that need to be addressed that are kind of outside the scope of the general tier one whole classroom instruction. So that is the purpose behind this document and um, you know, every building is able to build on it. And one would hope that when we do the second iteration, the document will have even more resources or people will edit and remix the tools that are there to make sure that they're highly effective. or people will edit and remix the tools that are there to make sure that they're highly effective for their building. So that is the overview of the student study team process. Um, any questions?
Any questions from the board for Dr. Goble or Dr. Shelton regarding the student study team guide? I just want to say that I'm glad that you all addressed how this aligns with special education because that was a question that I was going to ask, but it's, it's written in the guide specifically. So thank you for making sure there was attention spent to that.
No, thank you. And I think that's the central thing here, right? I mean, it's like people are walking up the stairs and they kind of miss the SST step. And it's nobody's fault. It's just a very tricky, it's a tricky system to build, but once you build it, it's a very powerful tool for supporting kids.
Thank you. So if there are no other questions for Dr. Goble, then we'll proceed to digital literacy purchases approved.
Okay. And I'm gonna start. Sarah Bishop, are you on?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so any, uh, we have to see board approval for any purchases over twenty-five thousand dollars. So that will be T, uh, T for staff report for next year, next week. Go ahead, Sarah.
Hi, everybody. So we are asking for approval for the litters, digital literacy, um, that will be purchased for every building. So each building will be receiving, um, anywhere between ten thousand to almost thirty thousand dollars worth of digital literacy books. And the reason why we are asking for this amount from the literacy grant, it will be funded through the literacy grant. But we're asking for this because we really want to start engaging our students in high interest level books. So yes, we want to hit the, um, nonfiction, which our teachers will have access to, our students will have access to. But we also want to hit the fictional side also. So our students are, they are really enjoying that, the literacy and that our families have access to it as well.
Thank you. And that total purchase is a hundred and seventeen, eight eighty-two, twenty-eight.
Any questions for Dr. Shelton regarding the digital literacy purchase? So that's quite a big sum of money. So if there are any additional questions or clarifications needed regarding that purchase, feel free to send those questions over prior to next week's meeting. I'm hearing no concerns or questions. Dr. Shelton, let you proceed.
Thank you. Next week for, um, T five staff report. Again, any approval, I mean, any purchase over twenty-five thousand dollars must be approved by the district. Uh, Paul Corson.
Good evening, everybody. So what we have in front of you right now is a request for the approval to spend the budgeted amount uh, on student devices. Uh, this year has been quite challenging to acquire devices and to be able to get them in supply to be able to meet the needs of the students, but uh, we believe we have a security vendor who is able to supply us with the shortage that we have uh, to be able to get our student devices up to speed for next year. So, uh, that is, um, basically what is going to be, uh, put before you. The devices are going to span all of the grade levels, uh, from K to twelve, including Cape. Uh, and we already do have some devices in district that will supplement these to make sure that we are one to one for next year.
Thank you. Uh, I also put on the screen, um, that our technology plan for, specifically for the devices are working to continually to develop it. Uh, we are collecting up the old devices. I know this was a question from before. We are collecting up the old devices. They have unfortunately depreciated to zero value. They're, the majority of them are seven years plus old. Uh, we have to do a lot of work on them to keep them up and running. However, we are still accountable for that inventory. So we plan on collecting it all up and we would like to use it for parent nights to actually, um, dispose of, to give to parents, but we have to have the right documentation. So we do have to go through the process of getting all of the old devices in that students have right now. And we have to have paperwork, get them off the inventory and we're now, we're able to give them back to the community once we get them in and account for them.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Shelton and Mr. Corson. Are there questions regarding the student device purchase highlights? I, I have a question. I know previously, um, I'm not sure which exact month it was that certain trustees communicated that they're having issues with the board issued computers that we have. So these purchases that we're making, will we be able to potentially get new devices from that purchase or would that need to be something separate?
Dr. Shelton, would you like me to address that?
Yes, please.
So this, this current, um, request for devices does not include anything except for students' devices. Uh, the board devices, um, currently my anticipation is to be able to switch them out when we are able to issue the new teacher devices. Uh, so you will have updated devices, but I do not currently have, um, budget allocated to be able to get the board new devices, but it's something that we can talk about.
Thank you for that clarification. Any other questions from the board regarding the staff report? T six, I believe, is what we're on the student device purchase highlights?
Yeah, it's T five or T six.
It's T five. You're correct. Any other questions from the board? All right, you can proceed to the big idea up in foundation grant application.
Okay, so we are in the process of writing a grant, um, for, I'm sorry, we need approval from the board for, from the grant tour uh, to submit the application. Uh, we have been invited to apply for the grant. We, we submitted a letter of intent and they loved our idea. They considered it, um, novel and innovative. And, um, it's going to promote, uh, some community, community involvement. But the most important piece, and I'm gonna jump down to the bottom, is that it's a student-led, high school project-based, um, project. We are gonna be using existing, existing funds and partnerships. Uh, Benton Harbor Education Foundation has agreed to be a partner. We have not asked them for money yet. We're gonna see what we get from the whole, from the, um, uh, big idea grant. And then we have the Hobart bequeufment, which actually centers around all of this. So the idea to give you the big picture as quickly as possible, it's nine o'clock. It is about Benton Harbor history. Our students are gonna take ownership of this. It's gonna be project-based. But what we determined was the, the front circle of the high school can become a, a garden walk that has history figures. Now, what do those figures look like? I'm just going very hypothetical. Students have to come up with it. Do they, I mean, are they gonna do art figures? Are they gonna do some sort of, um, kiosk with pictures? That's gonna be all up to them, but it's all around Benton Harbor history. Who do they choose to be the historical figures? Again, up to them. But it is their job to include stakeholders, to include community, et cetera. So there'll be more to come on this project. The timeline, I'm just gonna go very quickly. We are starting this summer. Some of our summer school, after-school program is gonna be working with some of the students that we're, that will, we will identify who would want to work on this project and start on this project. And, um, it goes into the next year to really get going with the research, with the building, with everything that you can think of. And then, of course, we did this little picture for you guys to get an idea. But basically, the school's turned the wrong way. But basically, this is the flagpole. We would be putting in a walk. And we just put like, like bushes there, but basically it's all about just trying to get maybe some historical figures and putting in benches. I know we have them wooden, but we do want them to be metal so they, they last. And we would just like for people that are, are walking in front of the school to be able to just detour and walk and do this, this little garden walk, have a seat and, you know, read about Benton Harbor history. So that's the project. Um, we are still working on the application, which I'm not sharing with you because it's divvied out. Uh, uh, Mr. Johnson has a piece of, there's a financial piece. Some of our high school people have a piece of it. So we're all writing it uh, and putting it together. It is due Friday. I thought we were gonna have to turn down the opportunity. They said that they completely understand that, you know, board meetings fall at different times. So we are presenting it to you today to find out if it has a hope of being approved by you. Because if it does not, we don't want to put any more time into writing the grant if it's not gonna be approved or has a hope of being approved next week. That's all.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Shelton. Uh, trustee Bowens, you have a question?
Yes, um, beautiful concept. And I'm sorry, I don't wanna take no more of our time. Well, this, it's a memorial garden out there now, and I know, um, the students at one point in time, would this, must with that, the more, more memorial garden in front of the high school?
A memorial garden in front of the high school?
Yes.
He's talking, and, no, it would not replace that at all. They'd be working around that.
All right, thank you.
It, it, Madam President?
You have the floor, Treasurer Craig. And thank you so much for always being acknowledged.
I'm sorry. Um, I just wondered if Benton Harbor history, I know that that used to be a class. I just wondered, is that still a class or a program?
You know, um, I, it, it currently is not a class. Uh, we are going to embed it in CTE, English, history, um, even some science. But no, currently we do not have Benton Harbor history as a class.
All right. Go ahead, Treasurer Craig. I'm sorry. Treasurer Craig, were you attempting to say something additional? Okay, maybe not. Vice President Bradley?
Yes, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, Treasurer Craig.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I was just gonna say, I know Ms. Marilyn Ross Vodin, I know that she retired, but she was, um, a teacher of that. And so just as a resource, that might be a good, quick person to, to get some information, um, to kind of keep the historical presence. Um, because she did say at one of our meetings that she would support us. So, um, I just wanted to kind of extend that, um, plug to, um, our teaching and learning department and the committee that's working on this grant.
Okay.
Thank you, Treasurer Craig. And Vice President Bradley?
Um, I'm just gonna say, uh, I'm excited about this. Um, I know that I'm, I'm a big proponent of our local history. Um, and so I think this would be an awesome idea to, you know, get our, um, students engaged in our local history because there's so much history out there that we're learning, still learning and, you know, before a lot of our elders get off the scene, this would be something good for them to go out and interview a lot of our elders, you know, from all over. So I, I think it's an awesome idea.
Thank you so much. Any other questions regarding the big idea foundation grant? All right, we're gonna proceed with the CTE cosmetology program. And I know you were hoping to get positive feedback about the grant. It sounds like we're, um, on board. So we'll hopefully that vote will go in your favor next week. We'll see with the CTE program.
Okay, staff report number seven. This is CTE Perkins, uh, Perkins Grant requires that board approves any physical move of any equipment. So let me go ahead and, uh, Ms. Rockett, not Rockett Martin, Ms. Rockett, are you on?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, there you go.
All right, so, uh, good evening. And, uh, with the CTE cosmetology program, we're looking to have the approval of, um, moving the equipment of the cosmetology program into the, um, temporary care of the Benton Harbor Beauty School, um, school that is going to, um, begin this, this summer, early this summer. And so looking at the program, just to give some, uh, brief history, the cosmetology program, um, was discontinued at Benton Harbor High School in two thousand nineteen. Um, prior to that, um, to, uh, the, the instructor at that time, I'm not sure about what was happening. But I do know that the, um, program was discontinued due to, um, some pretty significant issues. One being the, um, credential, credential issues, um, required for a cosmetology instructor to be licensed to be an instructor of cosmetology, not just a cosmetologist underneath the state of Michigan License and Regulatory Affairs, LARA. There was also the issue of, um, certain protocols and evaluation process that's required of all CTE instructors, um, to, um, um, make, uh, meet acceptable standards according to the SIP self-review. And, uh, that is determined by the state of Michigan and overseen by the Bari Risa CTE Regional, um, regional county, our county regional department. And then also, um, some instructional service, um, um, issues that were coming along as well within, um, the classroom and teaching and learning. So we're looking at the, um, what, what will happen is we're looking at, um, what CTE is all about, which is connecting our students with professionals, with businesses that are in our community. Um, to the point where they get live, hands-on experience with professionals in those fields. And to develop the skills necessary that they will get credentials or, um, certificates that will lead to employment, um, um, once they graduate high school. Or at least lead to, uh, minimizing the amount of time they have to stay within a post-secondary program um, to receive those credentials or certifications, uh, once they graduated high school. And so this is offering us a wonderful opportunity because we have a seat, we have a Benton Harbor School, beauty school that is, um, going to be in, uh, open in our community. It is not only going to be offered to the community as a whole as a beauty school, but also for our students. So that means we have a licensed, LARA-instructed, certified instruct teacher. We have one who will be, um, partnering with us to ensure that our students, that once at the completion of the two years, they're ready to take that state test and actually go into their, um, cosmetology career. Um, this is also a benefit to us because we don't have to, um, we have a partnership with someone we don't necessarily hire in to the district, um, and uh, while we're building our program backup. Um, at this point in time, we are looking to, again, expand our opportunities for our students so that, um, not only are they, again, able to connect with businesses within our community, but they're also able to, um, work alongside other students from other, um, districts um, as part of the share-time program, which will, again, um, give them that, uh, opportunity to learn how to work alongside um, in varied occupations and such as they continue moving forward. Um, right now, we are, um, in, under negotiations of contract. And again, as this equipment is, does belong to Benton Harbor High School CTE program. As long as the contract is in, um, is active and relevant, the, um, equipment never leaves our ownership. So we are not giving away our equipment. We are simply loaning it so that our students may utilize it. Um, just as if they were going underneath a dual enrollment program at Lake Michigan College. Um, this is no different from that. So this is not about giving away our program so much as we are enhancing it so that, again, we are broadening our expansion and horizons for our students, um, to work within that field.
Thank you. Um, President Robinson, that concludes our, um, our presentation. And I do want to say that this is attached to the agenda. Next week I will just read the, um, the reports and then, but I tried to put as much detail as possible in there. Um, so if anyone has any questions, we can answer them.
All right. Any questions, comments or concerns regarding the CTE program equipment move?
President Robinson, I do have a question.
You have, Mrs. Lord Treasurer Craig.
Um, I guess, um, I'm really excited about this cosmetology opportunity. I'm excited that the person or the people involved are looking to give back to our community and our program. I guess I'm not really understanding how we can agree to give away or to loan out equipment that is owned by our district, you know, to a, a separate entity that's for profit. Um, will we, you know, I heard that our students will benefit, but will we have to still pay for that? You know, will other students in other districts get to use the same equipment? I guess it's a lot of questions that I have that I'm thinking, um, again, just as it pertains to policy, not personal, but just policy. You know, how that kind of fits into what it is that we do, um, with board approval. Now, I am aware, just like we're giving away those computers, you have to check the stuff in and, you know, it was- you have to check the stuff in, and you know, it was bought with added cost dollars and X, Y, and Z, so it has to be counted for, but I guess I'm just not familiar with the process of loaning out school equipment to a for-profit business and/or if part of the compensation, will we have to still pay for the program? Because it sounds like, uh, outsourcing, it sounds like if we need a certified instructor to, if that's the only thing that we need, because I am familiar with the occupational certifications of CTE's, um, staff, and so I'm just wondering, you know, do we, are we outsourcing, I know that it's been said that we're not outsourcing, but it, and essentially, it does sound like outsourcing of that program, um, that program has been closed for a few years, so, I know that it's not something that we're getting funding for, but, um, it sounds like if we give our equipment away or loan our equipment out, you know, and we still have to pay, I guess it's not enough, I, I would like to, you know, have more details or information before we can vote on such a a broad concept, it sounds like a good concept, but, you know, I'm afraid, as a, you know, to kind of move forward with the concept, they're still not really teased out, so that's kind of my concern.
Thank you, treasurer Craig, and any other questions, comments, or concerns? Alright, thank you for your presentation, Ms. Rockett, and Dr. Shelton, there's a special education good news presentation?
Yes, there is. Lorinda, are you on?
I am on, good evening, everyone, um, Board of Education, community members, school staff, um, I am super, super excited to be able to present to you some good news this evening, everybody loves a bit of good news, right? And, uh, we are very excited to share our good news, um, is, is there, am I able to share my screen, is that the plan here?
Paul, can she share her screen?
Um, one moment. Go for it.
Thank you very much. Alright, so, um, you may or may not be aware, uh, but special education has, uh, very, uh, very strict guidelines and laws around it, and they are reviewed for compliance, so this is our compliance report, and let me see if I can move slides, there we go. So, when I first came in to work on compliance in Benton Harbor Area Schools, um, this is a phrase that came across from the MDE, inspect what you expect, and I looked for the source, it says it's just conventional wisdom, everyone, you know, you inspect what you expect, so much so that I received this sign, um, that is in my office, actually right behind my head, um, inspect what you expect, so for the Michigan Department of Education, they have a list of expectations, um, they're called State Performance Plan Indicators, that they review three times a year, it's called a strand report, and each indicator is, um, there's fourteen, and they start with an indicator B, one, two, three, four, and all, all the way down. What's listed in green on the screen there is a results indicator, so they look at graduation rates, dropout rates, your statewide assessment, your suspension and expulsion rates, educational environments and so on, these are results indicators, and then in blue, what you'll see is compliance indicators. So, uh, suspension expulsion by race, ethnicity, the disproportionate, disproportionality in special education, either overall in special education, or by what kinds of eligibilities are represented within our population, child find, and our transition. So what I, uh, requested from the State of Michigan was, can you give us a history, so in our, um, computer program, it's relatively, uh, recent, it's called Catamaran, and so before that, they had the SIM system, and so I didn't have access to a full history, so they were able to give me some information going back eight years regarding compliance in special education in Benton Harbor Area Schools. So what you'll see on this slide is, um, the two thousand thirteen to two thousand fourteen school year is the first band there in a dark blue, the yellow then represents fourteen to fifteen school year, the aqua, the fifteen to sixteen in the red, sixteen to seventeen, I was able to fit four years per slide for the eight-year span. So on the bottom of this, you will see, uh, these are compliance issues that were given to, uh, recognized by the state, so when the state does their monitoring, they're inspecting, um, those indicators, they, uh, do that, like I said, three times a year, we'll get, uh, reports in January, May, and September, and when they found an issue, they would issue a corrective action plan, so either they would find an issue with a student record that they reviewed, or with a district issue, so if they reviewed a student record and it revealed that the district had a larger systemic issue, it's called a corrective action plan, the SL caps there are student-level corrective action plans, that means they found a student issue specific to that student that needed to be corrected. So, you'll see here that there's, um, in thirteen, fourteen, there are things being issued, and then on the top part of the graph is when those issues are resolved, or the district was able to close out the issue. If you see a red line on the bottom, that means that this issue went on for a long period of time without correction. Once you go over the deadline for correction, you become, uh, you are listed as being in uncorrected non-compliance. So these red lines indicate that we were in uncorrected non-compliance for all of these issues, so you'll see that we were closing some of those corrective actions on the top part of the graph, but there was a whole lot that kept building up, that was not getting corrected and carrying over to the next year and getting added to, so you'll see, basically on the bottom of the screen, that we're getting more and more, um, issues from the state, the triangles and circles are from the state there in red and blue, um, blue being overall district corrective action, triangles being student-level corrective action, as you get into the sixteen, seventeen school year, you see these orange squares start to pop up, these are actual complaints made by parents to the State of Michigan that were, um, then, um, became findings and additional corrective action. So basically what you have is this corrective action building up on the bottom, and the work continuing on and becoming more and more uncorrected, and although we're closing some, we're not closing enough, and there's more on the bottom of the graph than there is on the top. And then you'll see, as we move into the seventeen, eighteen, eighteen, nineteen school year, we are, it's almost like we're bleeding out, we cannot, we can't get ahead of it, we're drowning in additional, uh, complaints and corrective action, and it's building on the bottom, and it's not quite getting closed enough on the top, and it just, I look at this graph and I feel like I can't breathe, it's, it's just, and you can't even read it, it's just so much work going on here, but as you'll see, as we move in, um, the blue arrows indicate timeliness, so what we needed to do was build systems to not just correct the issues that are being brought up, but systems that will keep us compliant and not have issues created when we get monitored again, because our, our records get monitored, so we needed to create systems and redesign the department and do so many things, so that we could be able to have, um, less on the bottom and more on the top, if you will, on this graph, so in the nineteen, twenty school year, um, you'll see that we started to slow down here with corrective action being given to the district, and we began to close here at the top, um, all of these corrective actions, and as we get into the end here of the twenty nineteen, uh, twenty school year, we begin to have more blue arrows, which means we're being timely, we're no longer in uncorrected non-compliance, we're closing those out, and the things that are coming in, we're doing in a timely manner, and by the two thousand twenty-one school year, we have not received any new corrective action from the State of Michigan, or, or a complaint or anything, what this dot here, um, in the middle there in January is a data alert letter, which means that our data, it, sometimes we're not exactly compliant with our data, but we're not receiving corrective action. Um, so, COVID caused some issues with timeliness and, um, you know, things getting done, we were shut down, the state was giving new guidance, and so, almost every district had issues with the timeliness of their, um, transitions and IEPs, they issued data alert letters for that, and so we, and we have not had anything else come up, and as of this point, everything that has been given to us is closed, so as you'll see here, moving into the end of this, uh, fiscal year for six thirty, two thousand twenty-one, we do not have any corrective action that needs to happen on our end. Um, we are now in a place to be proactive and to get ahead and move forward and really giving students, um, what they need and deserve from our department, so, um, we are very excited and so happy to share this good news. Um, just, uh, a note, uh, when you look at all those red lines and everything and, and all of that information, broken down, the areas that always came up over and over again, and were extremely difficult to correct, were this B for B indicator, it's our suspension and expulsion rates, um, here's some root causes that were identified, we have to identify root causes when we do a corrective action plan, these are things that were identified in those, um, corrective action plans as part of the root causes, and these are the solutions that we've been putting in place to do that systematically, so that we don't end up in this situation again. And the other area was, uh, B eleven, which is child find, which is making sure that if there is a student out there with a disability, we are finding that, uh, student, we are evaluating them appropriately and in a timely manner, and making sure that their needs are met. Um, a lot of that was, uh, there's a lot of difficulty with that, and the solutions you'll see there are just some systemic solutions that we put in place to make sure that our, our highest problem areas are the areas that continually would come up, um, are being addressed, so that they do not continue to come up anymore.
Thank you, Lorinda, and I'm gonna make two comments, one to connect the dots, so that last piece that she just shared with you, the child find, the student study team guide helps a lot with that. I mean, that is really key, that we, um, that we use this guide and we start to identify students that don't respond to the treatment that we, that we put in place. And then the second thing I want to say, well, congratulations to the Special Education Department, because they have worked so hard, I actually love that diagram, because it just shows you how much, it was like they were playing whack-a-mole, so how much, everything was so entangled, you fix one thing, two other things would pop up, et cetera, et cetera, so they did a really good job of getting their hands um, around that, and, um, very proud of them, so thank you, President, uh, Robinson, for allowing us to share that good news.
Thank you, we love good news here, Benton Harbor area, so you don't have to thank me, but thank you all for providing that presentation, and for all of the effort and amazing work that you've done, um, in that department, do we have any questions, comments, or concerns from our trustees regarding that good news presentation? Alright, awesome job, Ms. Robinson, thank you so much, next up, we have Mr. Miller, and he is going to give us our Student Support Services update, and Mr. Miller, you have three minutes, no, I'm just joking, go ahead.
Oh, I say slot, good evening, everybody, um, can we pull up the staff report? Alright, staff report SS one, uh, Benton Harbor Area School, subject, Michigan High School Athletic Association Resolution, um, date, June eighth, uh, two thousand twenty-one, reason for board consideration, MHSA requires a board approval for athletic participation in MHSA-sponsored intrascholastic, uh, competition. Facts and analysis, MHSA provides student athletes a handbook that outlines acceptable behavior and expectations for student athletics. Each school that participates in the MHSA-sponsored programs are required to adopt this resolution. The, the resolution states that Benton Harbor Area Schools will abide by all rules, regulations, and guidelines as outlined in the handbook for the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two school year. The resolution is to be approved for the school year ending on July the thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. Uh, policy reference, none, recommended action, that the Benton Harbor Area Schools Board of Education votes to approve the resolution of the MHSA as presented for the school year of two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two.
Thank you, Mr. Miller, and the resolution that he's referencing is actually hyperlinked into the agenda. Do we have any questions, comments, or concerns from Mr. Miller regarding staff report SS one? So once you all have had an opportunity to look over it a little bit more, if you have questions, feel free to send those over to our executive team, you can proceed with the Concentric Educational Solutions update, Mr. Miller.
Okay, uh, this is our last update with Concentric Educational Solutions, um, a home visit snapshot of Benton Harbor Area Schools from November, uh, to May, when we have the services from Concentric, uh, we, they, uh, did home visits for three hundred seventy-six of our students, uh, four hundred and fifty home visits, uh, two hundred and twenty of the home visits were hard contacts, uh, one hundred and ninety-five were soft contacts, where they left a letter, and thirty-five was no contact, uh, the overall home visit outcomes, forty-nine percent were hard contact, uh, forty-three percent was soft contact, and eight percent were no, uh, contact. Um, the hard contact outcomes, it was a one oh eight, uh, where they met with a parent or guardian, uh, during a home visit, uh, fifty-six, they met with a family member, um, twenty-seven, they met with a student, twenty-four, they had an incorrect address, but they spoke with the current, uh, resident, and four, they met with a family friend. And the primary reason for, um, absences in, uh, home visits that we done were for, um, the wellness checks for COVID-nineteen, and, uh, we have, uh, forty-nine for, um, the primary reason, and this is the last, it was, last cohort was cohort six, and, um, uh, Concentric is done fulfilling their services for this year.
Thank you, Mr. Miller, are there any questions, comments, or concerns regarding the Concentric Educational Solutions update for Mr. Miller? Hearing none, you can, go ahead, was that a question?
I just wondered, I'm sorry. Is the contract ending, or is there another year on the contract?
Yes, it's ending.
Yeah, it's, it's for this academic year only.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, and for clarity, it was paid through our, uh, Benton Harbor Education Foundation, we did not pay for it out of our general fund.
Alright, thank you, any other questions for Mr. Miller? Proceed to athletic updates, sir.
Okay, our athletic updates for our spring sports, um, our track, uh, team increased their girls' participation, uh, they had over twenty girls participate on the team, uh, some of the players, they also played softball, so that was great, they both, they played softball and, uh, track this spring, uh, nineteen of our boys participated in baseball, that's, that were on the track team, the highest event finished at our, uh, state regionals uh, was Desiree Cowes, she placed fifth in the hurdles, this is her first year in this event, our boys', um, four-by-one-hundred relay team finished eighth in eighth place, and our boys' four-by-two-hundred relay, uh, finished, uh, fifth place. Our baseball team finished the season with convincing, uh, victories over Battle Creek Central to end the regular season, and our boys, they will be playing against, um, I say go, uh, this Saturday, June the fifth, at, at twelve, uh, it's the district, uh, first round, uh, for baseball, the team was very, uh, young and inexperienced this year, uh, we had senior Kentrel Pullian and junior Trusell, uh, Singleton, that led the way as, uh, pitchers, uh, the top players in the infield, and they, they had the highest batting average on the team of three hundred and two eighty, uh, respectively. Also, Kentrel, he signed a letter of intent with Eastern New Mexico to play basketball, uh, uh, next year. Uh, so, our team made great strides during the season, Devin Perkins, um, he made much improvements during the year behind the plate, Coach Jenny is also, uh, looking forward to coming back next year, um, having him, uh, start as their, our catcher. Uh, for softball, we had, um, are starting with our young coach, uh, Trevin, uh, Alexander, he took over for the softball team, coaching duties this year, our numbers were pretty low this year, but the team shared athletes with the track team. As I mentioned before, the girls played hard and improved each game, um, Breisha, um, Hill had a solid year at, uh, pitching and shortstop, while, uh, Deidriana McFall improved each game as a catcher for the, the Lady Tigers. Uh, Coach Alexander is looking forward to improving. Uh, Coach Alexander is looking forward to improving uh their skills during this off season. And our fall sports will start officially August the ninth um of this year. And that's the end of my updates.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Any questions, comments, or concerns regarding the athletic updates provided by Mr. Miller? All right, hearing none. Thank you, Mr. Miller. We'll proceed with the agenda. Next on the agenda, we have old business. For old business, I would just, I know we've mentioned it a couple of times, but I'd just like to mention that our board retreat is scheduled for this Saturday at nine AM. Um, so I want to notate that in old business. Any other old business? All right, any new business from the board?
I I do have one, um.
Go ahead, Treasure Creighton, for new business?
Yes, ma'am. Um, I just wonder, um, you know, um, I guess as I'm just kind of thinking and and debriefing in my thoughts, um, as I prepare for my um board comment, I just wondered if as a board with the superintendent, if um we have at all considered right sizing our district, not saying that it's not right size. But I just wonder, I know that we're doing a lot of hiring, a lot of creating. And so I just wonder, you know, have we, um, I was looking over policy, the board policy. And it talked about as we create, you know, positions, and I know that we're gonna talk about this um this weekend some, but I would just like that to be noted under new business. If we could start thinking about making sure that we have right sized our buildings, right sized our district um to be reflective with our enrollment according to board policy.
All right, thank you, Treasure Creighton. Any other new business? All right, now we are at, oh, I'm sorry. So this is technically new business, but Mr. Johnson mentioned it um today. So we have the budget hearing that's scheduled for June twenty second at five thirty. So I want to make sure that I notate that and ensure that the board did catch that date. Um, it's considered a special meeting, so I'll be calling it for the purpose of the budget hearing. But I just want to make sure you all notate that. Um, that's what I have for new business. So I know we have some people that have to request time off from work and things like that. So new business, we have the budget hearing scheduled for the twenty second at five thirty.
Madam President.
Yes, Secretary Tripple.
Um, are we having a graduation this Friday?
I'm going to make the announcements in my comments, but the answer is yes. And this posted on our social media and invitations went out to the board as well via email.
That's what I was trying to see if I missed an invite um for the graduation. Thank you.
Yes, sir. It was emailed, I believe it was last week Friday, if I'm not mistaken. It was definitely last week. So you wanna, I know we sent quite a bit, but there is an official letter of email invite to the board.
Yeah, and we can resend it and I also mentioned in previous board meetings.
Um, next we have open public comment. So I will um begin reading our statement. Board of it, I'm sorry, is there a board member speaking?
No.
Okay, one second, Miss Miss um Ely. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment or educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on district matters. Today, there are three, two areas for comment on the agenda of which you may decide when to speak. Public comment on agenda items, which was earlier, and then now we're at open public comment. Per policy zero one six seven point three, which governs board participation at board meetings, we request that you preface your comments by an announcement of your name, address, and group affiliation. When appropriate, each statement made by a participant shall be limited to a three-minute duration. And per our bylaws, no participant may speak more than once during this meeting. Participants shall direct all comments to the board and not to staff or other participants. The board will listen, take comments and questions under advisement and not respond at this time. I, as president, will refer questions to the superintendent for research and response. If you have specific questions for the board or executive team that require follow-up, please email those directly to liz dot goodwin at B H A S dot org. And I believe Ms. Newcombe had a public comment she started to provide. So I'll go ahead and allow um Ms. Ely to have the floor.
Good evening. My name is Mary Newcombe Ely. My address is P O box eight forty four Benton Harbor, Michigan. I'm a retired educator from Benton Harbor Area Schools after thirty six years. And I just want to commend all of the board members. Uh, you did an excellent job. You went through a lot of materials. You had very relevant questions. And the meeting was exciting to me. I've been on since five something and now it's after nine. So I just want to say, bravo, good job. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Ely. Much appreciated. And I know that if you felt otherwise, you tell us right here on the open board meeting. So thank you so much. Um, next up, we have Mr. Turner.
Good evening to each and everyone and now host to the community. My name is Shaquille. I'm a former resident in Ben Harbor. The reason why I'm here tonight is because the school district is in violation of code compliance. Many of the residents are tired of the trash and so forth. I get that you guys are trying to consider demolition and so forth. But the school district is in violation of state and federal code compliance. And I'm gonna read you those real fast. High weeds, litter, obstruction, alleys, sidewalk and street signs, public right of way, bulky trash, standard structure, uh, there's car parts, illegal dumping, illegal outside storage, and graffiti that has been located on the school district.
Mr. Bones, yeah, thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Turner. Mr. Turner? You're muted if you're still speaking, sir.
Sorry about that. So the school, uh, many of the, many of the residents that's near the school property is asking for the school district to help us clean up, clean up these properties, uh, especially the one that's off of Donnie Atkins. The senior citizen, they they're kind of tired looking at trash across the street, which is located at the Fair Plains Northeast property, which belongs to Ben Harbor Area School property zoning as well as the Second Baptist Church. Uh, second is that I want to commend Ms. Rockette. Uh, I worked with her last year. She did tremendous job. And I hope that her program does get approved, but also I'm asking that the school board take into consideration and bring it back ROTC, which was a very benefit to our students in the school district. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Is there anyone else for public comment on the line? May I speak who that is that just spoke? I see two hands. Okay, Ms. Noel, I've, you've already spoke for public comment.
I have, President. However, there's been a lot of new found that information that I feel that needs to be addressed. If the board would allow me to at least uh publicly respond to what was put on the floor, I'd greatly appreciate it.
Well, unfortunately, Ms. Noel, our policy indicates that I can only allow you to speak once. So your choices would be to, I'm not sure if you have questions or comments that you want to share with us. Your your choices would be to email those to Liz or to make those comments next week.
Okay, we'll go with the second option. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you so much for your presence. And I see Ms. Gavin.
Thank you for seeing me today. So I I I guess I have a few questions. How many people do you need in order for Black Wall Street Zones to be on your agenda for a vote? You have um, we have over five hundred and seventy signatures. We have support from six countries, um organizers from Harvard University, uh, School of Policy. We have uh Black Lives Matter Michigan in support of this work. We have churches in support of this work. We have community members in support of this work. But our uh school board president will not put it on the agenda for a vote. And I was informed that there were questions that uh trustee Tripple had. And I guess my question is, did um trustee Tripple ever get in contact with Mr. Reed? Because I didn't receive a call with question. And so I think that it's great that we're getting a lot of information on these agendas. But you're ignoring this very important issue. And so I just want to make it clear to this Board of Education and to the community that we have done everything in every professional manner possible. But at this point, the board is going to leave us no choice but to um have some type of direct action. Because we've asked to be uh voted. If if you don't want to do it, then you can vote no. If you want to do it, then you vote yes. If there's something in the resolution that you disagree with, then you take it off. But um, what I'm seeing is just circumventing um what we are asking for. So I believe that trustee Creighton asked if we could be on the agenda. And the response from uh trustee Tripple was that there were questions. We have the answers to the other questions, but we didn't receive any more questions. And so there was more, um, it was worth putting on the agenda. And so at this point, I'm moving forward. Please don't take it as any disrespect, but we will have to um probably contact maybe the the school district number or somebody's number on a regular basis until an emergency meeting is called for Black Wall Street Zones. It's unfortunate, but that's what we're gonna have to move to. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gavin. Is there anyone else on the line for public comment? All right, hearing and seeing none, we are going to pass the mic over to Superintendent Dr. Townsend.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you for those individuals that stuck with us throughout this entire meeting. A couple of highlights. First thing, I wanted to congratulate my high school administrative team for a very successful prom. Our young people looked absolutely beautiful. Major shout out to Reasons to Share for documenting and commemorating the moment with pictures and videos. My young people had a great time. I had a great time. Everyone looked beautiful. Um, great, great celebration and a nice little step forward for a little bit of normalcy. Additionally, major shout out to uh my high school team as well for our high school senior awards ceremonies. We had uh multiple seniors acknowledged for their academic achievement, excellence in the community. Um, some scholarship opportunities were available. And I would like to announce um uh two young people who really exemplify um that tiger excellence and that tiger pride we talk about. Um, our high school valedictorian is Ms. Star Williams and our high school salutatorian is Kiwan Williams. So a major shout out to those young people who did a phenomenal job uh with their academics and they're leading the way as the valedictorian and salutatorian. Also, major shout out to Kentrel Pullian and his family. Um, he received the academics, I mean, athletic scholarship to East New Mexico University. We had his National Letter of Intent Signing Day, I believe, on last Thursday. Uh, major shout out to our coaching staff. As you know, our boys' basketball team uh really overachieved. They went on to win a um district championship as well as a regional championship. So a major shout out to those individuals um for for dominating in our conference and in our division and doing a great job. Um, we do have graduation this week for high school, June fourth. Graduation for our high school. Please get in contact with your high school administrative team. For all the details and information is also posted on our Benton Harbor Area Schools Facebook page. So please tune in there for any information that you need. Uh, we're expecting to have a beautiful outdoor graduation. It's gonna be a great time. Additionally, June ninth, Discovery and Richmond Center having a graduation as well. Very excited to see our young people really um take that next step in their academic and educational journey. Um, so shout out to uh Principal Barnes and her teams over at Discovery and Richmond Center. Can't wait to see our young people's graduation ceremony. Everyone must know that registration for sc- summer school is open right now. Families can visit our website at B H A S dot O R G, W W W dot B H A S dot O R G. The deadline to register is June fourth, that's this Friday. It's an eight-week program that will run five days a week, beginning on Monday, June twenty first and ending on Friday, August thirteenth. We're diving right into it. I'm very happy and excited to announce um that I recommended to our Board of Education, Ms. Shannon Rockette um for the new principal, Martin Luther King Junior Elementary School. Um, she's a Benton Harbor graduate. We're very proud of her accomplishments. I know we often talking about looking within. And that's exactly what we did to find our next leader for MLK Elementary. Additionally, I'm recommending to our Board of Education, um, our high school principal, Principal Roseburg. Again, we often talk about looking from within, um, and we found those great individuals in education administrators right here in the Ben Harbor Area School staff uh to lead to that next level. I do hope of that as we go to next week, that uh the recommendation that I make um do get approved by our Board of Education. I do believe we will increase academic achievement for our kids and we will be a better education system over time. Our staff evaluations have been completed. We're very excited um that all of our certified teachers have been rated effective or highly effective. Major shout outs to the hard work of our teachers all year long, grinding on in in person, on a virtual level. Uh, major shout out to all of our administrators. We actually had a a teachers' union meeting today. And you know, our educators are doing a phenomenal job at every level. I don't care what capacity they serve in Benton Harbor Area Schools. Everyone deserves a gem award for going the extra mile, and we appreciate them. Um, this week, the district issued a joint memo with our teachers' union to our certified teachers regarding the phase two of our teacher pay gap plan. As you recall, we did give that presentation right here at the Ben Harbor um work session for our Board of Education. I mean, we need to repeat that again next week. We will do that. Uh, we're very excited to be in phase two of our teacher pay gap plan. We're restoring what's been done to our teachers, getting them the finances that they deserve. Um, and hopefully that will keep our retention high and that we don't have the turnover that we've had in the past. Um, major special thank you to all Benton Harbor Area School alumni and friends who worked so hard to clear out and beautify the front of our high school. Uh, thank you to the volunteers for their service and their effort in the community. Uh, special shout out, thank you for alumni Iris Guidry and June Bowman for leading that effort. Really did a phenomenal job uh putting mulch and beautifying, planting flowers in front of the front of the high school. You know, it's a lot of great things happening, a lot of hard work. Ladies and gentlemen, please understand um, during this time in education, it's very difficult, very hard. But I do believe um as we grow together, we'll learn together, become better over time. So we can see results. We want to see the academic return on all of our investments. Um, and as Superintendent of Benton Harbor Area School, I would do everything in my power to first and foremost ensure that we're complying with all board policies so that can be a non-issue and that we can move forward, do great things for our young people. We expect to enhance the education experience of all of our students in academics, in the arts, and in our athletics. And we're confident that over time, we will increase academic achievement. We will close or get out of deficit and close our debt over time. It's a process, not an event. It's a process. And I will leave and finish with this. Listen, because this work is difficult, I do understand we're coming up the rough side of the mountain. It's just that the road is rocky, is difficult. It gets hot sometime, it get cold sometime, but we're determined to get to the summit. Um, and we don't wish it was easier. Every day we wish we're better. We don't wish for less challenges. Every day we wish for more wisdom. We don't wish for less problem. Every day we wish we have more skill to get the job done. And I do have confidence in our team at every level in Ben Harbor Area Schools that we will get the job done. I have confidence in all of our Board of Trustees members that we will get the job done because our young people will not get this time back. Time goes on, the beat goes on, and we're gonna go right along with them and get them the education that they deserve. Thank you so much. I look forward to seeing you all on next week or or this weekend at the retreat and then next week at our regularly scheduled board meeting. Thank you, President Robinson.
Thank you, Ms. Rockette, for letting me know I'm on mute. So thank you, Dr. Townsend, for your announcements and comments and updates provided. I am going to switch up board comment a little bit today. I normally do the same order to a certain extent with a little bit of variation to start. I'm going to switch things up. I know that we're all ready to wrap up our meeting, but today we are going to start with Treasurer Creighton for board comment. Treasurer Creighton, if you're speaking, you're still muted.
I couldn't get my phone off mute. I'm sorry.
It's okay. And I know I probably caught you off guard calling you first, but I'm just, I'm going to switch it up to make it a little bit more fair because I normally put our trustees up first. So go ahead.
It's all good. It's all good. I was just going to thank everyone for all of the hard work. I know sometimes it might seem like, you know, we don't hear the positive. But you know, I do have a lot of joy that I experienced, you know. And so I am very excited for the work that we're doing. So if I don't say it enough, thank you so much for your commitment and your hard work. Also, I would just like to thank all of our parents and stakeholders for hanging in there with us and supporting our initiatives and trying to give our students the resources that are needed to move our academics and programming forward in Ben Harbor Area Schools. I would like to thank the alumni. Like I said, I'm celebrating 20 years today of being a graduate of Benton Harbor High School and Ben Harbor Area Schools. I attended 20 years. I'm sorry, I graduated 20 years ago. And 100% of my education pre-K-12 was here in Benton Harbor, Ben Harbor Area Schools, and so I'm proud of that. Also, I'm looking forward to the work that was presented and the follow-up to, you know, some of the concerns and questions. And I would just like to thank my fellow board members for continuing to support each other and the initiatives moving forward. I agree with our superintendent, you know, we'll get better. We're not looking for easy route. You know, we're looking to tease out, and we know that, you know, we're creating gems and diamonds that'll shine. We're tigers, you know. I know Mr. Tripple likes to say that we're predators and never to prey. And so, you know, even if it's not easy, you know, we're resilient and we can do what it is that we do to educate students and to show their tiger pride. And so I'm just thankful to be a part of this moving train in the right direction. And I look forward to my journey on the school board as I get better. And also, I'm excited to be a board member for the class of 2021. It's special for me. Like I said, it's 20 years for me, and so I'm excited to be a part of that on Friday. Go Tigers!
Thank you, Treasurer Creighton, for your comments. Secretary Tripple, you've turned your camera on, so I'll go ahead and pass it over to you.
I do not have any comments. Thank you.
You have no comment to make today?
No, I have none.
Okay. We are going to pass it over to Vice President Bradley.
I just wanted to say good evening, everyone. Thank you all for coming out to our Parents Central Admin Staff. Thank you for coming out. I would just say that change takes time. Glad to see all the exciting things coming to the district. And remember that it's a marathon, not a sprint. And I also want to give a special shout out to Dr. Townsend. I know we may not all agree on some areas, but you have my full support. That's all I have to say for this evening.
All right. Thank you, Vice President Bradley. We are going to go to trustee Bowens next.
What time is it? I want to say thank you so much. First off, I wanted to say congratulations to Ms. Rockette. Congratulations. It's inspiring to see local people go to different opportunities and receive promotions. So I want to say kudos and congratulations. I also want to say, it may not hit often, but Dr. Shelton, you are doing an amazing job from what you inherited. Facts don't lie, and the facts have proven that you are doing one heck of a job. I also do too have full support in Dr. Townsend. What I told you a few weeks ago, keep focused on the vision that you have for the district. It's not going to be an easy vision. We're not going to agree on everything. You know, one thing about Benton Harbor and the Tigers, we like to fight, and we're fighting for what we believe is right. So sometimes the meetings may become heated, the questions may be asked, but I still have faith in you. And I'm excited to see what goes forward within the vision. One thing I do want us to understand and address is it's dangerous when we know things are a lie and we continue to spread them. And we come on and we go on social media. I can take it because I have tough skin. I've been in the fight. I'm not new to this. But we go on social media and we attack and put out false lies. It's dangerous. So I just want to say, let's be mindful what we're putting out and who we're attacking and what we're putting out. I'll end with this. It's a Shakespeare quote, and it's very interesting. I don't want nobody to say I'm calling him anything, but I'm just going to read it. A fool thinks to himself to be wise, but a wise man knows himself to be a fool. And on that note, I would say God bless Benton Harbor, and I look forward to attending graduation.
All right. Thank you, trustee Bowens. We have trustee Rockette Martin.
Yes, I'd like to say first of all, hats off to special ed. I have four, five special ed's in my building at one time. So my hats are off to you for the work that you've done, for the diligent work that you've done and seeing that we have no, we're not out of compliance, out of anything. So that's a blessing, really. And we'll clap for that now. Tomorrow may be a new day, but for now, we are in compliance and hats off to you for that hard work. Also, I'd like to thank Mr. Golds. I think he was talking about, I don't know if it was him or Dr. Shelton talking about what you put in place to service the whole child. I'd like to say thank you for that as an educator, as a principal, as a teacher, as, you know, a parent. Children need that kind of support, and if we can get people together to work to support the children, to support a child that's having difficulties, you know, how do you know what, you know, your support will do for them? Because you could save a life. So I'd say hats off to that, that people are willing to spend that extra time to do those things, to not be so quick to put them out, to throw them away, or, you know, make a blanket statement, this child will never be anything. But you're willing to get in there and work and make sure the kid is supported, that the children are supported, and that they can do great things, you know, if you keep that mindset. I always say, once a child is put where he belongs, where he finds his niche, he succeeds. He succeeds. Now, it may take you a while to get there, but he's successful every time. So for us willing to find that niche for that child, I congratulate you and hats off to you for that. I also would like to say congratulations to the class, to Benton Harbor's graduating class. I'm proud of you. You have come through troubled times, and nobody else that's graduated from Benton Harbor can say, well, we came through a pandemic and we made it. So you stand out just for that alone. Hats off to you for that. And I wish you the best in your post-secondary endeavors, you know, whether you go to college or tech school or, you know, careers that go straight to work. I wish you the best, and I'm hoping for the best for you. It is always so nice to see children that you've had in class, that you see them out in the workforce now, you know, doing great things. You know, I'm just overjoyed. To me, that is one of the greatest things that can happen. So I too would like to thank my board and for, you know, how we put up with each other. Let's just say how we put up with each other in moving forward. We will do this work. We can do this work. And you know what? You only fail if you stop. And anything worth having is worth fighting for. And so that's what we plan to do for the children of Benton Harbor. You know, I worked 35 years and retired, and then I worked seven years, almost 10 years after I retired from Benton Harbor School because my heart is with the kids. So and I'm currently raising a new generation to send to Benton Harbor Area Schools if possible. So yeah, let's, you know, let's just continue the work and continue to respect one another. And, you know, we can do this. We can do this. That's all.
All right. So I'm going to be super brief with my comments tonight. I just want to thank everyone. The committees, chairs, the board members, our community members of the public that stayed online with us tonight. We appreciate your presence. We appreciate your work. Those that are employed by the district, the board, which is volunteering, and also the community members that are here because you're passionate about what happens to Benton Harbor Area School. Every voice on this meeting tonight does matter, and we want to ensure that you all know that we believe that. One thing that I have found in my leadership is that there are difficult decisions that I sometimes have to make as chair. And there's always going to be one entity or another that is going to be frustrated with the direction of the decision that I have made. My skin has grown thick in the last six months that I've been in this position, and I understand that I've been placed in this position for a reason. So I understand that that is going to be how things are at times. But what I need for the community and our board and other stakeholders to understand that decisions that I make are made with the best interest of the board and the district in mind, whether you agree with that particular decision or not. So I just wanted to preface that. I'm so sincerely thankful to my board for the effort, the diligence, the questions, the opinions, and the input that you provide. Because there's always something that one of us is thinking that the other has not thought of, and I think that's what truly makes us amazing. What I want to see us do better is work collaboratively with ourselves, not take certain things that we say personal, work on our seven norms of collaboration and our board norms, and also work collectively as a team with admin, like I said, like the 95 bulls, so that we can get to a place where we are working without the kinks and the disruptions and the confusion at the board table. And I know that it's something that we can do as we continue to go through our stormy and norming and forming. Relating to committees, I know that secretary Tripple referenced, there was an email that was sent regarding HR potential update. So we have to get to a place where we are fully on the same page as to what we want those updates to look like prior to coming to the board table so that we don't feel as though, or certain board members don't feel as though there's surprises at the board table, but then admin doesn't feel as though they've attempted to provide the information. And so that's one of the things that we'll talk about at our work retreat, just getting to that place of understanding collectively as a group. Want to say congratulations to the class of 2021 that will be graduating this year. Want to thank all of the alum that came out and volunteered their time. I did come out and do a little bit of labor myself, as well as the community members that volunteer throughout the city on various projects with the Ben Harbor Community Development Program. So those are my comments for this evening. Really excited about all of the athletic updates and all of the presentations provided by each of our chiefs. And just thank you overall to my board and everyone that is present. And if I forgot anything, I will mention it next week. So I have nothing further to say at this particular time. I am going to call for a motion for adjournment.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
All right. So the motion has been made by Vice President Bradley. Is there support or second? So the motion has been made by Vice President Bradley and supported by trustee Bowens. Any questions, comments, or concerns prior to adjournment or any reasons why we shouldn't adjourn? All right, secretary Tripple, it's on you. Can you call the roll for vote?
President Robinson?
Yes.
Vice President Bradley?
Yes.
Secretary Tripple, yes. Treasurer Creighton?
Yes.
Trustee Bowens?
Yes.
Trustee Rockette Martin?
Yes.
Trustee Buchanan? Motion carried. Meeting is adjourned.
Awesome. The meeting has officially been adjourned at 10:15 PM. Have an amazing evening and night, everyone.